Welcome to our first select board meeting in the new town hall. Thank you all for attending. And for those of you who are attending remotely, thank you. Please roll call, please. Attendance.
Captain Yellow here.
Gibson here.
Secosa here.
Hey, Lee.
Antrick here. All present. Would you all join me in such allegiance to the flag?
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a pretty extensive agenda. Quite a bit on the consent agenda. Any suggestions or changes?
I had one just rearranging. Let me see if I can find where it was. It was the bit about classics rules. And I thought we should put that after we talked about the energy commission because that had some concern about industry and ethics and stuff that that might pertine if we decided to go forward with the classics commission.
So the chair and I discussed the the topic for the classics and private road agreement is only to see if the board wants to add it to the agenda for discussion at the next meeting.
Okay.
So we're not expecting to discuss it, but just to share the letter that the chair has and the idea to discuss it further. And if that's the board's wish, then it will be added as an agenda item, not just under stack, of course, for October 3rd.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
Anything else?
Yeah, I I have G H K and O that I'd like to talk about.
G H K and O. Change legislative policy committee, department for private and units. Chief this year, please turn the computer. And the Congress. Three, three. Yes.
That leaves me with the M and N. Let me discuss.
Electro generation contract.
Well, it was for companies chairman.
Okay.
And N as well? Is that what you said? Or just N?
Yes, and I had M and N.
And N.
And I had an N. It was already mentioned, so I think this is the other two.
So we'll take off. G H K M N and O.
Correct.
And flip them into a thick hold.
Do business in that same order.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Make a motion that we turn around, remove those four four mentioned letters and move them to do business from the consent agenda.
Second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Close. Very good.
Yeah.
Oh, dear.
All right. Excuse me. If we approve the agenda, accept the bills as amended, we have that motion.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, public comment. As per our public comment protocol, everyone has three minutes. It's open to public and people can participate. Three minutes. Do we have anyone?
If you're participating virtually, you can raise your hand or press star six. Speak up. We want you to be recognized by the chair.
In person.
Where do I go?
Mr. Russell. Come join us here.
You guys can stand the podium?
You can do stand podium or sit.
I'm gonna sit. I just had surgery. Probably should be wearing my arm brace, but hopefully my surgeon's not watching.
This will be quick.
Very good.
Nothing dramatic. Robert Russell, nine nine toll road. First of all, I just wanted to say this is really nice. All beautiful. It's the first time I've been here and for a guy that chooses to wear a suit at this meeting, I can appreciate the air conditioning. So thank you. The ring is well done. So I want to say something positive about the delivery session. I could come in here and, you know, say other things and I I wanted to just say a very brief thing. I was had an opportunity to talk to several people, Matt Towne, Ron St. Jean at that event. And whether you supported it or not, it's not what I'm discussing. I think approximately 250 people came out roughly. I'm just going by the votes. Maybe maybe just 10 over. Again, putting aside the reasons we were there, I know Ron St. Jean and Matt Towne said something to the effect of we could just get this many people to come out, you know, on a voting day. So what I wanted to say was, wow. Encouraged by people coming out to take part in the system, to take to cast votes, to speak what they feel is important. I was encouraged by the people that spoke against my war on our goal in the sense that I like to see people involved. And that's literally what I want to say. I know people disagree with the reasons, but I'm saying there is positivity. You can look at how many people turned out for that. It was amazing. The line, if you remember, one part went out and so anyway, that's all.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the time. Yeah, I think they're around 300.
It was amazing.
Okay. Anyone else in person? I'll speak. Good. Anyone? One in one.
I see nothing, Mr. Chair.
Again, for those of you who are participating by telephone, R six. Recognize you and couldn't speak. About 30 seconds, a minute.
Still nothing on my end, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right. So we will end our public comment session. We do have public hearings. School board leader, one told us she would not be able to attend. About the only thing I think of terrible importance, or not terrible importance, good importance, the school did start on 31st of August. I believe it's going pretty well settling in, but the next school coordinating is next a week from tomorrow. No more. I don't see. Yes, Jim.
Any update on their active shooter training? Give me that out.
Haven't seen anything.
Good to see him.
I wasn't able to attend the meeting. This action, but I know that's on their agenda, probably discussing in public session. That those trainings aren't usually discussed in non-public session.
Yep.
I don't see the police chief.
Yeah, a little right outside. They're coming in.
Oh, they're coming in.
Yeah.
Sweeten, I think you're gonna be fine. Hopefully, the police chief.
You don't make it much.
Or if you can sit there, somebody else will.
The swearing in of our newest full-time police officer and looks like some family members. So exciting.
Thank you for coming. Welcome.
You're on, chief.
You're on, chief.
Always does.
Yes.
Have you done any kind of introduction at all, sir?
Nope. Your floor is yours.
So, just as with Officer Turner, we have officially sworn in Officer Tugas prior to. This is the ceremonial swearing in. He's been active now for approximately two weeks on the street, if I'm not mistaken. Noah. So come on up. This is Officer Noah Tugas. He is our newest full-time police officer. We stole him from the town of Nottingham. He graduated the academy in 2021. Worked Marine Patrol as well prior to working with Nottingham. He's a Norwood graduate, so we won't hold that against him with a criminal justice degree. He's joined today by his girlfriend, Alana Whitney, his mom and dad, Rhonda and Thomas, and his brothers, Christian and Luke. I think I covered everything there. I'm gonna swear Officer Tugas in and his girlfriends would have pinned the badge. Do this the old-fashioned way. You raise your right hand for me. I know Tugas.
I know Tugas.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and sincerely swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
Discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me.
As a police officer of the town of Barrington, New Hampshire.
As a police officer for the town of Barrington, New Hampshire.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations of this constitution.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations of this constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, folks.
Will forever be the first officer sworn in in the new town hall. Congratulations.
No pressure.
Congratulations.
We got another life.
Thank you all for attending. Next on our agenda, including Chair of the Library Trustees, Mr. Daniel.
Thank you. I have some paperwork for you.
Thank you.
Just one chief.
I'm grateful you're going to give a summary of what you're going to say, that you don't have to take notes and hopefully I won't speak. But I'm Susan Gadiello, Chair of the Library Board of Trustees since last April, and we've had a lot of change over the past year at the library of the last couple of years, but particularly the last year. We may be aware, we've had a number of vacancies, a lot of turnover, and most recently, the library director, Melissa Hewitt, has given her notice. She's going to be leaving as of October 7th, I think it is. We wish her well. She's taking a job that is largely remote, which is going to work very well for her and her families. But she's been with us for four and a half years. So obviously, one of the first things we're doing is we formed a search committee to look for a replacement. And we'll be getting that search underway in the next couple of weeks. Going through that process, we've also been working on a transition plan. The last time this position was vacant was five years ago when Amy Inglis decided to step down. And we had the luxury at that time of having a director who was happy to stay on until we finally found a candidate to replace her. Obviously, we don't have that luxury this time. So we've worked on a transition plan and basically we're going to be dividing the director responsibilities between Wendy Rowe, who's the children's librarian, and also the assistant director, and Amy Inglis, who remains on staff in a part-time position. Amy has agreed to work full-time through the end of the year until we fill the the position. The this whole issue has caused us to really take a hard look at the trustee level of what it takes to run the library, really analyzing workload and certainly we've been looking at why we're having so much turnover, but also to what is what is the function of the library? How can we make that efficient, meet patrons' needs, and not run through staff and burn people out? I and I asked to meet with you tonight because I know we're going to talk about all of this when we come before you for our budget presentation, but I wanted to give you a heads up on what our conclusions said there. Talking with both Melissa and Amy, and as you may recall, Amy was the director for about 20 years before she stepped back. Excuse me. That job is taking 50 to 60 hours a week, and that is simply not sustainable. Obviously, budget is a full-time position and it's a salaried exempt position, so the people in that position understand that it may take more hours some weeks, some days than others, but it shouldn't consistently take that much more time. The it has led the trustees to conclude that we really need to reshape that position somewhat, delegating some of the responsibilities to other staff. And we have really functioned with a very, very tight staff at that library over many years. So we're going to be bringing forward a budget proposal that includes request to increase the processor, what's called processor materials processor position. That's the position that Amy is currently in, and we want to increase that to full-time. We know that that is a big hit, not so much for the salary part, but because benefits become come into play once the position gets over, as you know, 35 hours. The technology library assistant position is currently vacant. We are actually going to outsource a portion of that job, which is the sort of network maintenance piece and use the company that we have been using for troubleshooting. They do this for some other libraries, so we've actually gotten a costing out from them to handle that part, which hopefully will make it a little bit easier to recruit an appropriate person for that position. And then we'll be able to also have some of the programming responsibilities assumed by some of these other positions. The other thing that we have added as part of our transition plan is we've hired what we call a page. It is quite honestly, I think the lowest paid position in town, grade one, step one, but we've hired them for an average of 10 hours a week, and their responsibility is almost exclusively reshelving materials. Because obviously, all that stuff that goes out has to come back and then it has to get back on the shelves and being so shorthanded, it's not just desk clerks who are doing that, but it's people like Wendy and and Amy, our higher level staff. So that's a little bit about our transition plan, our plans for next year about increasing the processing position to full-time. And we also, at this point, are proposing to add that page position as a I'm going to call it a permanent part-time position, just at 10 hours a week, but hopefully that that will get us through, get materials back on the the shelves and operate appropriately. I'll honestly say, one of the things we've been concerned about when we look at how we use volunteers at the library, and we do use a lot of volunteers, but by labor law, we have to be careful not to be replacing existing staff or activities that are done by existing staff with volunteers. That's not exactly kosher. So we're aware of that, and that's one of the things that led us to that page position as well. We look forward to working with you and with the ABC in the coming weeks and months as you work on the budget. And I'm really happy to meet with any board members as a group or individually, should you want to have more discussion between now and I think we're on for November, mid-November, something like that, or let's change the date.
No, no, date has not changed. No, no. You have time.
Put it on Christmas Day, it'll be a gift for all of us.
I'd like to grab it. My Christmas net. That's the ball. Thanksgiving, if it really buckle down.
Yeah.
So and and George is a we as our liaison, George Bailey has been coming to most of our meetings, and I think has probably been aware of the situation that's been evolving over at the library. So thank you very much. Is any questions you have right now? I have to go try to field them.
Any questions?
Yes, Jim.
So 50 to 60 hours a week, I mean, you know, I hear complaints on both sides of things. But is there a more efficient ways that we can structure the the library and and the flow? Have you had anybody from the outside look at what you're doing to volunteers, to partially pay, to how the day-to-day operations go? Because I'm thinking if I'm me and I have 10 hours to replace books back on shelves, if I just did that, I could probably do a lot of books back on the shelves. And then, you know, we it is a tight spot over there. I do believe, yes, there are the hardcore readers out there like Mike Godson, who love a hard hardcover book every once in a while. But I think see things more going towards the technology side, whether it's Kindle or whatnot. But with the staffing concerns over there, being so tight a space, do we have too much staff over there? Are too many volunteers? Are we tripping over each other? You know, that that all is questions that I have.
Sure, and all all good questions. One thing I'll I'll mention is that the library is open, I think it's like 49 hours a week. We're open six days a week. So part of the issue, like when we have desk clerks, they are part-time and quite honestly, the scheduling issue is is a challenge, but keeping all those hours covered. I agree with you. There's been a lot more interest in technology. And we see those costs somewhat increasing. We coordinate with the state library with a regional cooperative, sort of jointly purchasing access to ebooks and so on. So the that doesn't eliminate the the request for paper materials, DVDs, and all of that sort of stuff. The other thing, of course, the library does is it serves as a social center, quite honestly, ranging from mahjong to educational programs, book groups. Today I skipped the spice group. You know, there there's a whole variety of things that are going on at the library. So it's not merely books and, you know, getting those books back on the shelves. There's a lot that else that is going on. And the technology use, the demand for technology and technology assistance from the public is significant, as well as the use of the technology that the library offers. So the short answer to your question is no, we have not run in a consultant to see if we could do things more efficiently. I've been, my view, just personally in the library, if the people, the staff are busy, the activity seems I'd say legitimate, but I don't see people wasting time. And as I've gotten since I've been back on the trustee board in the last six months, seeing more closely what really the director is doing, it is almost an impossible job. It's certainly impossible to get it done in a reasonable timeframe, but ranging from collection, selection of the materials as well as programming, staff supervision and management. It's a lot.
Have you guys brought back full charging for books and whatnot from COVID?
I don't understand the question.
I think there was, you know, during COVID, they were allowing people to take out books for free or whatnot, or.
Are you talking about with fines? That they dropped the issue of fines?
We discontinued the fine that was, I think, a year or so ago before I was on the board. It's a national trend has been eliminating fines. That's not entirely. Somebody loses a book, they have to replace it, but late fees is what is what was lifted. And that's been a trend. It was found across the country that there were people that were not using the library because they had late books and they were reluctant to bring them back or they couldn't afford the fees. So they lifted those and found utilization increase, particularly among, I'm going to say, the more economically challenged portions of the community.
I would just like, I get a chance to speak and it's not under public comment. I think it's fantastic. Now, what I what I would like for you to reiterate to Jim is the fact is that the staff has gone through some of these processes of fines and what have you for late books and and they've changed all the procedures. As you make it more stringent, so that people that are always the ones that fail to bring the books back and pay for everything, they now have a system in place where they say, Lord, we don't have to give you any more books until this is taken care of.
Right. If you if you have overdue materials.
I thought it was something even as crazy as during COVID that you guys weren't charging for library membership.
Well, we we never charged for library membership for residents of this town. We we do have a number of out-of-town library users and they have a fee. We just actually increased that fee effective the first of this month. And also summer people also have people who are just coming for the summer, the lakes. We do have a summer, I'm going to say, membership at the library and those folks also have to pay a fee.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Better.
Thank you. I hope you didn't put your pen away. I was going to ask you for the, yeah, no, with all all seriousness, you have to understand, ladies and gentlemen, when I say I have to wait the public comment, but we sit and we chat and we we carry on from there. So now that the shoe's on the other foot, I feel so much better. But anyway, for that being said, I would ask that prior to having the meeting, I was expecting something different from what I read tonight, but I would like to ask that the people that are doing our budget would read under budget laws 32323. And 11. And eight, because it all applies to some of the items that go for the library. And I would also ask that you would look up section 202. RSA 202s and then these pertaining to the library. And there are some very good recommendations and or statements made that I think that would be beneficial to the library for the coming years. So it's just a recommendation for reading material.
I'm just trying to, are you suggesting reading material for us or?
Trustees.
Okay.
Yeah, when the 202.
I'm very familiar with.
I know you are, but I I am too, because I I I read them all.
For the benefit of the rest of us, could you just give us a one-sentence summary of 202?
RSA 202 is the section of the state statute that governs public libraries in the state. But and it's it's a lengthy, pretty lengthy.
Yes, it is lengthy. Like one of the things they talked about anticipated funds, one of the questions I know will come up in covering the budget, when you talk about anticipated funds and funds that are donated during the what have you and everything. And so 202 explains exactly how they do it. And that was the reason why I put it together with the budget numbers and the others, so that they would have the answers for us when the when the time came. So when they set for us. And also it describes some of the items that the library could be doing, the library isn't doing. And so if somebody else comes up and brings it up, it's all it is. That's why I recommended the 202. I'm not trying to step in your business. It's just a recommendation.
It's it's very useful there. The state law is very prescriptive about how fines and fees can be used. You know, we charge fees for copying. That's what those things can be used for. Thank you very much, and I'll look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Hey. Next on the agenda is issues issue on building permit on Cottage Lane, private clerk, Robert consider of Ramblas. Maps 115, block 11. Last meeting.
Yes.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Be back in a few.
Yes.
I think hit that hit that deliberately. Comment. Wayne Watson, nearby builders, Kristen's Ball. Okay, I'm just gonna read what you've already received in the record. Representing Sarah and Robert Brumbles, fifth of Cottage Lane. On October 5, 2018, Mr. and Mrs. Brumbles purchased and moved into their house on 55 Cottage Lane. Mr. Brumbles owns a business with an office located in Salem, New Hampshire, and his wife works in Massachusetts. Her long-term, five-year plan was to move Mr. Brumbles' office to his home as his health began to fail, and he needed to reduce or eliminate his data commute to Salem. As advised by his surgeon, accommodations for handicapped accessible features are necessary due to his limited ability, mobility, excuse me. The letter from his surgeon was submitted. Actually. Mr. Brumbles' condition worsened ever scarred price by pace than was expected, and in 2020, he pursued financing to remodel their home and research construction firms to system endeavor. In 2021, Mr. and Mrs. Brumbles employed in part donors of Barrington to assist them in expanding their home to facilitate the need to improve access to Mr. Brumbles during the mobility issues and move his office to Barrington. The expansion would enable the addition of the handicap accessible features and establish the ability for Mr. Brumbles to work out of his home. On July, July 19, 2022, we presented to the planning board our proposal of 5.8% of construction cost, or 18,000, seven forty-one, and a request for a waiver of the remaining 4.2% due to the finances. The net construction cost was decreased from the original. The net construction cost was decreased from the original three thirty-two nine oh four by ten thousand six seventy-four by reducing several features in the already revised scope of work. The planning board denied our request for partial waiver and recommended to the select board that the Grumbles paid a full ten percent. And I can say it's twenty twenty-two requested from the select board partial waiver of four point two percent. However, this too is denied despite precedence to the contrary being granted in other cases. Nonetheless, although in part, the original intent of this project was to move Mr. Grumbles' office from Salem to Barrington, the Grumbles' family has no option but to eliminate this from their scope and reduce their focus to the accessibility improvements. The reduction in scope decreased the construction cost to two hundred eighty thousand seven seventeen. The cost of the revised road improvements plan went up to twenty eight thousand seven forty-one. I submitted copies of those plans as well. Large copies are going to be read. So twenty-six thousand seven forty-one excavation and fourteen hundred sweat equity performed by UBI. If I vote volunteers, these also seem to patch provisions to the proposed road improvement. These reductions in scope and contracted construction costs have increased, and road improvement costs satisfy ten percent acquiring requirements by the select board in accordance with the class six and private road billing policy. We therefore respectfully request that the building permit be granted as planned. Any questions? Hey, I would like to make a motion to authorize the issuance of a building permit for map fifteen, lot eleven, as proposed.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Hi. Is there any objection?
I object to the process of that, for not showing equal status to the rest of the citizens that we have here in town. Anybody else that had the means and thought to build a house should also anticipate the means necessary to take care of the ten percent that goes along with the building. I just think that it's not, the word is not fair, but it's not proper for us to turn around and decrease that ten percent when we can make other people pay that same ten percent, even though their house might vary in the price from the construction cost. That's the reason why I'm against it.
Mr. Galloway? When's the last time we made somebody pay that full ten percent? Because from what I saw from the plans is they took all the roadside that they can and widened as much as they can without huge, you know, you were limited by the landscape.
What I'm gonna say is...
Mr. Bailey, as a matter of fact, they're meeting the ten percent requirement of investments in road improvements.
Yeah, I do make that.
They adjusted their proposal and are meeting the ten percent requirement of the policy.
And they're asking for a reduction here?
No.
No.
Previously, they did, that was denied.
And we gave it, we denied it.
Factually, the board did not deny it. They continued, the board in the last meeting, continued discussion to allow department heads to review the materials that were submitted after the planning board, but before the select board. This select board has not yet made a decision.
Very good.
Okay, sorry.
I apologize to the...
I'm sorry, please. Forget my reference to the select board denying it, that was incorrect. Thank you, I got the correction.
Push it down. All right, is there any other public comment? This is a public hearing. Is there any votes down remotely? On teams, if you'll press the raise your hand, or if you're doing it by phone, it will dial star six for recognition.
Sorry, we're voting for it. Yeah, I apologize.
The motion can stand the table.
Yeah. People be there.
And I don't see any virtually.
Anyone else? Nothing virtually. All right, now we can vote. All those in favor?
Yeah, I appreciate you coming in at ten percent.
Thank you for your, thank everybody for the updates. I have to change my vote, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. May I ask a question? So with regard to this committee, I'm not quite sure what your protocol is. I did have a public comment regarding, and I know that that's not appropriate at this point. At what point would it be appropriate for me to make a public comment with regards to the proposal of the committee to address the class six road?
We're going to discuss that as a group, and then there's another public comment period toward the end of the meeting.
So tonight?
Through now, if you can do it tonight, but that's toward the end of the meeting.
That satisfies the select board if I did it tonight, or do I wait until the next meeting when it's clear? Up to you.
Yeah, your thoughts.
Wonderful, thank you all.
You're on. Okay. Excuse me, next item, acceptance of the SB four oh one road and bridge funds. I think we discussed this briefly at our August date of meeting. From various sources, various funds. One is to, for road fund, to give us one hundred ninety-one thousand dollars fifty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. And for the bridge fund, one hundred forty-six thousand nine hundred and five. You should vote on these separately, if they're kind of combined. There any comment from the public? Whether we should accept this money or not?
First, on, so there are three separate hearings. So the first hearing is on the road funds of one hundred ninety-one thousand.
I'd like to make a motion to accept and expand the SB four oh one road funds in the amount of one hundred ninety-one thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-four cents.
Second.
Okay. Actually, just a quick question, kind of, these funds were unexpected, right? They came, and so have they been allocated in essence, or I assume we have limited needs for roads and bridge work?
You're exactly right, yeah.
Targeted?
So the road agent and I have discussed, and there's, like you said, the list of projects is much longer than the available funding sources. And so what this will give the select board is additional flexibility in road and bridge projects for alternative funding sources. So we've discussed, you know, over the last few months, a lot of the grants and other alternative funding sources we're pursuing, but a lot of those require shovel-ready projects. So we anticipate that this is really good money to pay for the engineering phase of these projects that we know we need to have done, but haven't done yet because we're contributing money every year to the capital reserves so that they come in in due time. And so having the engineering done on these projects will make our applications for alternative funding more competitive. And so that will be a select board decision, and I think that's an important note. Before we actually spend these funds, the select board will decide to spend them. But multiples of money will be available resources to the select board to decide how to spend and prioritize infrastructure projects.
Great, thanks.
Is there any other public comment? Again, if you're on teams, you'll raise your hand, push the raise hand thing. If you're doing it by telephone, star six.
I see nothing, Mr. Chair.
I see nothing. Now, we have a motion.
The motion can carry.
Okay. Do you can carry the motion? Yeah, all those in favor?
Right.
Hope we're going to accept that money or not.
The CERITAC funds were denied by the town of Dummer in New Hampshire.
Really?
Yep, over a hundred thousand dollars.
Yep, it was.
It was great for headlines, that's about all.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, the second tranche of money is for bridge funds for a hundred forty-six thousand nine hundred and five dollars. Again, similar, similar to the road fund. This will be used to develop projects that we can, that would need to be done. Is there any discussion on the board?
We use some of that money to go towards the latest one we got ongoing, if we need to. We need to, is there the override? Can we use some of that for that?
That would be an eligible expenditure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other discussion from the board? Those of you who, anyone else here have commented on whether we should accept this money or not?
I would like to make a motion to accept and expand the SB four oh one bridge funds in the amount of one thousand four hundred, one hundred thousand four hundred and nine hundred and five dollars.
One hundred forty-six.
One hundred forty-six thousand nine hundred and five dollars.
Is there any other public comment? Again, if you're on teams, you'll press the raise hand. If you're doing it by telephone, star six. Seeing a lot coming up?
Second. There's no question.
Motion been made and seconded to accept this money. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those? Very good. There is some need to discuss, and then vote on acceptance of the Newtown Hall grant funds for FEMA generator and equipment, is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. This is to, to the generator and the emergency, as this will be the emergency planning center. All this money, again, is being offered to us by several emergency managers.
After much courting.
After much.
That's saying.
Nice job on that.
Take care of the water, the showers, and stuff, in case you have to put people up.
This won't be a shelter.
No.
There won't be a shelter.
No, it's not a shelter.
Operations center.
No showers.
Just the, okay.
It's just the ops center. Okay. Any other discussion from the board?
I'm gonna refuse myself from this.
Dan?
Thank you.
Which room is it going to go into?
So this is the emergency, this would be the emergency operations center. So the floor jacks in the tech, in the IT room, the phone line, the copper line backup phone lines that come in are all direct wired into this room. And so the, this room and will serve as the emergency operations center, emergency management director's office in there, in the event that it's necessary. So from a public safety perspective, the public safety building has served as the primary emergency operations center. And this will be the primary, that will be the secondary. Most incidents in Barrington are managed very effectively from the public safety building. But there are certain situations where separating the needs of emergency response in that facility from the coordination and management is important. So having an offset location as a primary is valuable. That's the, at the discretion of the emergency management director, who is Chief Walker.
Thank you.
We had discussed this, actually, that was part of the planning discussion for the town hall.
Who applied for the grant?
I did.
I did.
I just wanted to say thank you.
Absolutely. No, still don't turn.
Is there any public comment? Chief Walker?
Just to take you back on what Administrator Moncive said, the other beautiful pot boat is spaced right here and being a little isolated is, during power outages, we'll be able to either maintain this area in an air-conditioned state or heated state. So if people need to, if there's widespread power outages, need to come in and power up, use electricity to get their phones, charge phones or them type devices. But more importantly, right now, the library very generously invites people in to come on a hot day, to get out of the hot weather, because the town has no other place. But the way this space is set up, where it can be secured from the rest of the building, this can be opened during extreme heat waves or cold waves. So that's another benefit to terms with emergency operation area.
Thank you, sir.
First one at the podium, Rick Walker.
We're already at the planning board. Yeah, there are people that, I know, I know.
Sorry, word. Any other comments from those present? For those of you who are on teams, you'll push the raise hand function if you'd like to comment. For those of you who are on telephone, star six, wait for recognition. Three, nine. We don't obtain a motion to accept one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so.
So make a motion to accept the hundred and twenty-five thousand grant from FEMA?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good for you.
These are funded items.
Please, please put a note that Mrs. Sacocha did.
Right.
Close himself, please put that in the minutes. His protection.
Consent agenda is modified. I want to do that.
Oh, so I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda, that we approve that minus the items we've already removed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Gee.
Newly formed energy, maybe it has some under applicants.
I was reading all the applicants and their backgrounds, and really excited for the town on this one. What a, what a group of volunteers, very excited. I think we'll see some great things out of some really good local individuals, so.
Agreed. According to our policy, we would discuss this, and then, or we can discuss it, but we would vote on it at our next meeting. Any questions of those people, or?
Thank you for their time that they're gonna volunteer to the town to help us out.
Again, there were, I will go through the names for the record, their applications for the energy committee, Daniel Frederico, Dr. Fina, Leah Barrington, Doug Thobin, and Alicia Patton. And we will then present them at the October third select board meeting.
Two, 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 on the list. You read Bill Irving's name.
Budget committee, that's next.
Okay.
Thank you.
Don't want to budget pay. There were two applications. For the advisory budget committee, Mr. Royce and Mr. Irving. I've been, I've been an alternate member. But Mr. Irving said he'd be willing to be an alternate member. If we do vote for that, then I'll just continuously use something big as sleep. I thought, oh, were there any questions?
Well, Mr. Irving is with us tonight in the audience, if he did have questions for you, or for him, I apologize.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Budget committee is, it's a very interesting committee. I've been on their committee for a long time. It's a real insight into the town, so thank you, I enjoy it.
Mr. Irving spent six years in the budget committee in Rollinsford. And they're a municipal budget act committee, so they actually developed the budget. They're responsible for the budget they presented to voters with the ability of ten percent cap on setting it. But I think this perspective would be interesting for the town, Eric.
Thank you. Thank you for volunteering. As yet, our policy is to consider people formating and then to vote on the public meetings. Very good, thank you very much. Back report.
Thank you. So here we are, the first and only meeting in September. And so take the opportunity to address the September work anniversaries. Again, these are folks that were hired historically in the month of September. So Timothy Boody in the fire department for twenty-eight years now, in his capacity, John Janelle for twenty-seven years in the fire department. Amy English, who we heard about tonight, was first hired in the town twenty-six years ago. You heard a lot of that time, who was as a library director. My report still lists her as the interlibrary loan librarian, which she was up until a month or two ago. And now she's the processor, she's assumed the processor role. Dana Drake has served in the highway department for twenty-two years. Barbara Irvine works right here in the town hall as the land use administration assistant. She started nineteen years ago. Jim Sanger in the transfer station currently works in the MSW shed. Trash compactor's been with the town for seven years. JT Harman, fire department for five years. Sarah Bailey is the assistant recreation director. That was a promotion, she was hired as the programmer, and quickly assumed the assistant. Uh, that was a promotion. She was hired as the programmer, um, and quickly assumed the assistant director role. She's been in the town for three years. And Crystal Markey was hired last year, this town last year, as the deputy tax collector and finance officer. They'll certainly appreciate the tenure of both employees and, and many more years to come. Very top heavy, um, as far as tenure in, in September, folks that, uh, so there's probably some good luck there.
Right.
Uh, that we'll, that we'll see for many more years. There aren't any questions on work anniversaries. I'll move on to the Newtown hall. Great. So obviously we're in the Newtown hall. Um, for the select board's benefit, I know provided new updates throughout the process, but also for the community's benefit. Uh, we moved a week of the 22nd, uh, and honestly, I was truly humbled by how well that week went. Uh, the, the actual move was conducted at the direction of the road agent by the highway department employees. Uh, these are folks that signed up to work for the town to work on roads and on equipment. And they, it didn't skip a beat, um, playing the role of mover, um, hauling stuff out of the two stores of the old building. Around all the walls of this building that were brand new and, you know, eagle eyes from all the staff trying to make sure that things were where they needed to be and all that. Uh, but similarly impressive was the staff of the town hall, who again, they sign up to do very specific jobs with the town clerk's office, building department, et cetera. And they were all packing their belongings. A lot of them loaded up their belongings into their car, brought them down here, settling in. And so that week, um, I think spoke volumes of the dedication employees that we have, um, the morale that they're willing to do that. Um, I know some of you stopped through, which was fantastic. Um, and so it was, it was really a great week, so good that we were able to also completely empty, um, the storage unit at the Atlantic trade park. So that is all of that, all of the storage that was in there is now in our storage room, um, in a pretty familiar capacity. So down the hall. And so we've got a lot done in four days, um, and it, it really went well. Appreciate the residents, uh, being patient with us, uh, you know, not being able to serve them in, in full capacity. Uh, while we moved, unhooked everything from there, hooked it up here. Uh, and so obviously we've been open for a couple of weeks now, um, and I'd say we're, you know, operating 90% capacity, still settling in. Um, you know, making, making work the kinks out of the new space, becoming familiar with the space. Uh, I think during the budget development process for 2023, uh, you'll see some things that, um, some budget requests for myself or department heads. Things that now they're in their space. They understand how they want to use it a little bit better, uh, whether it be equipment or furniture, et cetera. Uh, so I'm not thinking, you know, large, large dollars, but, um, I think that will be a theme, uh, that you'll see from department heads. So, um, the information on the, for public meetings, we had our first public meeting with the planning board. Uh, I included some notes in my town administrator report to make sure, uh, that that is easily accessible to residents. But, uh, all the public meetings, uh, obviously open to the public in this building, uh, but also with the audio visual equipment available, uh, for remote participation. And the link to join the virtual meetings is always the same. So barrington.nh.bev/sbmeeting will always log you into the select for meeting when it's active. PB meeting is the planning board, CB meeting is the select for, or the zone, excuse me. Uh, so that's an easy way for folks to, uh, to come in. And so the other thing, we touched on this briefly at the, the last select or meeting. Uh, but the, we were juggling, trying to figure out how we wanted to hold some sort of a ribbon buddy open house ceremony. Uh, but we actually think what we're gonna do is on, uh, October 18th, the Tuesday that we'll be holding the special town meeting, vote here. Uh, I think we will structure an, an open house event for that same time. We'd already, the select board had already decided that the offices wouldn't be open to the public to serve the residents, uh, with the traffic from the election. Uh, but I think that's a great opportunity to give folks that are coming to the town hall to see the space, uh, in a way that isn't disruptive to the normal flow of business. Um, and so I've talked to all the department heads in the building, um, they're open to that and, and willing to be here, uh, to help, you know, to tell residents about their space and allow them to see the space. Like I said, you know, ways it's not disruptive. To give Tiffany a lot of credit and really all the staff here taking the time, uh, out of the day for folks that keep on the building and wanna have a tour, wanna see around, taking the time to do that, that's great. Uh, but of course we all still have jobs to do, but so that, um, that so insolidating an open house to an event like that, which is a coming bill. Uh, so more details to come about that. Uh, questions about the Newtown hall or anything that I share? Ms. Rayleigh?
The only I want to say to you is that many, many decades ago, I presented to the town the very first, request to turn around and do updates and, and redo the old schoolhouse. Uh, that was one of the first things that I've ever done, uh, for that old building there and that just never passed. And coming all these years past here to have this here is fantastic. And, and to talk about the staff, the way they work together, it was just amazing. It was like, it was coming around on here and this and. But it wasn't just the staff that was in here. It was from the other departments that volunteered, had people here, had vehicles here. It was, you know, you drive up, you look, I just stayed in the car, turn around and walk away. I mean, that's how well it was working. I mean, not that I would make any drastic changes, mind you, but anyway, I tell you, it's fantastic to watch all the departments work so good. And that's what I would ask you to say, all departments, if you said it, I must have been asleep, but no. It was fantastic. And decades ago, this is the results. I want to thank the proponents of the town for voting for us. Thank you.
Great. Absolutely.
Any other comments? Questions? Thank you, sir.
Great. So, Frank Lake, Dan. So this is just an FYI heads up. Uh, we talked about it previously. We had an inspection done, uh, of the dam gate underwater inspection. And so, uh, you, what you'll see as part of the budget development process is an increased request to the dam capital reserve, um, in order to fund the repairs that are necessary, which were scheduling for the fall time period of 2023. Um, so certainly happy to answer questions, but more details to come on that.
Mr. Ray. Swing Lake Association, have you contributed anything to this?
No.
Thank you.
The town owns the dam.
Okay, that's, that's, I should have said that.
Okay.
Who owns the dam that you with?
Yes.
Thank you.
No problem. Um, so the next topic is recreation administrative assistant hours increase. Uh, again, just for the select words information, uh, I provided some background, but brass tax, the, uh, recreation commission voted to expand recreational revolving fund dollars to expand the administrative assistant position, um, to a 34 hour a week position, uh, which is partially benefits eligible. Uh, and we will continue to fund that position at that capacity. There'll be no operating budget increase, uh, connected with that. Um, and so, uh, that's something they've been wanting to do for a while. They've asked the select word previously. Um, and the select word had previously said they didn't feel like expanding the position. The operating budget made sense. And so the revolving fund decided to expand, or the commission decided to expand the position with revolving. Happy answering questions on that?
Yeah, and I think, uh, the conservation commission should address that issue there. Forty-two, Mr.
The recreation administrative assistant?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, no problem. If there are any questions. So the next topic is the Richardson Pond Dam 2023 construction funding project. So at a high level, this is just an update to the board and community to be prepared, uh, for the presentation of a warrant article, um, in some form or fashion, asking voters to appropriate partial funding for the construction, reconstruction of the Richardson Pond Dam. So the, uh, conservation commission's chair met with the commission on Thursday. Uh, this isn't in your report because this went to press before that meeting. But they voted to appropriate $50,000 to pay for the design engineering, uh, of the reconstruction project. Uh, and they discussed their willingness to partially fund the construction portion. So once we have the design engineering, have a, a cost estimate. Um, I think the select board should expect some meeting, uh, with the conservation commission, probably if you will check, uh, to decide how to go about, asking voters to fund partial, uh, part of the project and what should or shouldn't come from the conservation fund, et cetera. Uh, and I know the chair and I met with, uh, the conservation commission chair. And so if there's other details you'd like to share, you're welcome to.
No, basically. So, yeah, I agree.
And you'll look at the bridge fund for possible monies as well, the bridge fund monies that we just voted on?
So the road grid won't be eligible.
They.
So it's, yeah, they're, they're, those are tied directly, um, to road infrastructure projects, so road bridges. There, there are.
Like a big hole in it.
What's that? Yeah. There are still potential funding sources on the table. Uh, the first round of funding applications was unsuccessful. Uh, it was eligible, but didn't score high, uh, given other priority projects, uh, in, in the state. Uh, so the, the efforts to find alternative funding will continue, but a backup plan needs to.
And the $50,000 from the conservation commission will cover the design costs?
We expect so. The, uh, the caveat to that is we'll likely retain the engineer through the construction phase to do some construction administration. And so.
Might not cover that.
All of that or not is a concern.
Thank you.
One other just brief update from, sir, please.
No, I was gonna say, I believe the state sent this, this good project to recent.
Right.
Even though they denied it this cycle, they suggested they re, re, for the.
So another update from the conservation commission from their meeting on Thursday, and we'll talk more about this in a minute. But they voted to donate a hundred thousand dollars from the conservation fund towards the Lake and Forest project. This is the, the, will be, I guess, the northern, northeastern, uh, hillside of, um, Nippon Lake. And so selling southeast land trust, um, has brokered a conservation easement purchase. And, uh, asked the conservation commission to donate funds, uh, and they voted to donate a hundred thousand dollars. So at the October 3rd select word meeting, the select word will be asked to ratify that decision. Um, and so if you have questions in the meantime, let me know and we'll try to get an answer before the meeting.
What percentage is that gonna change or change of, uh, either for wetlands and property that's in, uh, east. What, what percentage is that gonna change? How much more is that gonna take there and what are the taxes on that piece of property? Not being held in, uh, straight up looms.
Yeah, so the property's in current use currently, and so the tax liability is very low. So the tax liability will, will change negligibly, negligibly, I will say. Uh, the, your question about what percentage of the town is either conserved or in current use. So that percentage won't change because it's already in current use. So, you know, a lot of times folks in Barrington, uh, discuss how more than 50% of the town is either permanently conserved, perpetually conserved, uh, or in current use. And so this will remain in that category, but permanent.
All right. So if, if the people sold the property, they'd be paying the, uh, conservation tax. They conserve the tax on it that comes from that. And then also be paying the state, uh, sales tax, if I'm not mistaken. Or is that only with a home, not just that plain property?
That's only with a home. So, uh, I don't know what you mean about the state sales tax, but they're reported.
There is, there is a tax.
The transfer tax.
Yeah, three percent, yeah.
But the, the land use change tax is only assessed when a property is taken out of current use. So it's only taken out of current use, um, if there's a, a, the condition of the property changes that makes it not eligible. You can't just call up the town and say, I want to take my property out of current use. You have to, it has to. Yes, okay.
Yeah, well, I just want to make sure that, uh, you know, we're not putting good money after bed when we turn around and purchase more property. And, uh, the ownership will be itself, you know, the land, the land trust and that. That's just something we can discuss later on.
Great. Yeah, like I said, it will be on that topic, it'll be on the agenda, but I just want to give a brief heads up. Uh, okay, last topic, uh, or actually no, second, third to last topic, uh, that I had for you. Uh, we briefed this at the beginning, and so the chair received a letter, um, requesting the, the board consider forming a committee with citizen participation to talk about the classics and private road policy, the goals and, and how to approach that, um, in a different way than the policy as it stands. And so the chair shared that letter with the board. It's copied in, in my report in the materials for this meeting. Uh, but the question to the board is, do you want to put the, the formation of that committee on the agenda for the October 3rd meeting? Uh, to decide whether forming that committee or not is something the board wants to do?
But you know. You know, I want to go to change it, so. We're just waiting.
Yeah, I read it. I don't know if I'm ready to do it yet.
Yep. Sure. We're not deciding whether or not to form a committee, but whether or not to discuss it the next meeting, just to be clear.
Okay. It's there. Let me know if we want to make it in the chamber to discuss.
Well, how do you feel on it? We're, we're out here, so.
We have recently, I mean, this policy is not even a year old. We've had discussion on it several times. I think the builders and the people who are interested in this do recognize the importance of the highway, uh, the emergency services and the intent of the policy is to upgrade our roads mostly. As we've seen, they've, they have been able to adapt to that, and I think that's probably worth thought. My personal opinion is that we ought to give this a look a little more time before we talk about changing it. That's, that's me speaking.
Well, uh, the way that I feel on it is it's definitely something that needs to be addressed as, you know, we, you know, every time it happens, it comes before us and then it's put on to us. Okay, you know, i- is this person doing as much as they can? How are they gonna give it back? I mean, there's a lot of, um, um, clarities there on how to do it and how to get it. But ultimately, I mean, you know, Chief Walker even said, you know, I asked him, you know, uh, I think one of the last meetings, how many times in 30 years have we not been able to get to somebody? He gave me a goose egg. Um, but at the same time, you know, with, you know, people coming up, buying camps, turning them into homes, whatnot, we're, we're gonna see that. And before, you know, we'll see how this plays out, uh, I guess. But, you know, ultimately, I think that we need to kind of add on to put it up to vote for, for the voters. Because, you know, we either allow people to update their property or, or we don't. Um, and I'm not gonna make that decision. That, that's, that's at a town level for people to do, but, um, you know, when, when's it gonna get unfair? But I, I think we definitely need to talk about it. Doesn't mean that we have to have action on it. But if there wants to be a, a small, you know, I hate to call it a committee, but, you know, that a group of people that have some good ideas or, or think there's something. I mean, you know, this is a, this is a town, you know, they should be able to bring it up to our attention, especially if they feel the same way, right?
They're going to the school, yeah. Way I feel since they're going to bring it up for attention, that they can go to the planning board, uh, when they generally make all those decisions. And the planning board could draw something up, then present it to them, uh, to the public to be voted upon in March. Because you have the planning board that, uh, is responsible for partially undoing all that. And that they should be the ones that bring it forward. And as you know, before we brought this forward, the one we have now, uh, with, uh, a strong emphasis on safety for our people that use our equipment, whether it be just, just getting, uh, fired, fire, or just for the police, or is it just for, uh, snowbank? But we've got, uh, that's why we did this and we need, we need to keep that in mind. So I, I think that if we let us, uh, play out a little bit longer, see how it works and then bring it forward, I think that'd be the way to do it.
Because the biggest issue was, is we went to our department heads, both Mark and both Chief Walker, and said, hey, what do we need to provide safe services to the town, uh, the residents of this town? They gave us those specs and what they require for, for safe people, or for, uh, safe emergency protocol. And where we can't meet those guidelines, now we're bending rules of what our experienced department head said. This is what we need. This is how we feel. So that, that's where it gets dicey. Cause now, now we asked our experts that we, that we have in their, their admin roles and go, well, thanks for the suggestion, but we're gonna let this one go. You know what I mean? That's, that's the hard part of this. I mean, it's, nobody really wins.
But, but Jim, I, I feel that.
If you agree with the, with the planning board.
Yeah, I appreciate that. But we, we, you and I were on the same, way back with this discussed. And we had lengthy terms. We've, we've had questions to all of our staff, uh, to talk about it. And we had lengthy terms, we've, we've had questions to all of our staff to talk about it. And there was five of us that sat down and we came up with how this should run. I think John was brought in and involved in a little bit of this also. But we, we, we came up with a determination, this is what we need to do. And, and the way I look at it is if somebody wants to come here and enjoy our town, you know, I'm going to tell you, we're, we're doing 1950 right now. There's not many, there's none, nobody else can say that to us. We have a group of people that do it, and then we have to continue to support them and at least give us a chance to run out for another couple, three, four months, see how it works and go from there. That's, you know, and, and, and I agree with what you're saying. I'm not here to get in a contest with you. I just feel that after all of these years and how much difficulty we've had with the classics program, I think that we owe it to the public to at least try it for a little longer.
When, when the policy was first developed, did we solicit public feedback? Did we get asked for either written or, or public comment? I mean, I imagine in a meeting like this, but did we actually seek out? Feedback?
So we answer your question, decades and a half, decade and a half ago, this was plans came up and of course I was on the Select Board then, and we met with the department heads that we had then, and some of the police and other people that, answer your question is no. Not, we didn't do it for the second time either.
So, but back when we had our strategic planning meeting, I really enjoyed that format, the guided discussion and the roundtable, and we could really get our ideas out. I think I would, personally, I'd like to see another meeting like that where we, as a group, come together, we in public. So we get public input, we get Mark and Rick and people to come out and, and give their input. And maybe, you know, have that span a little bit past this period of budgeting and meetings that we're going to be filling up with. To George's point, three or four months out or something, but then really figure out, and, and, and maybe, Kenny, you might have some insight on from other towns, how they're handling the classics dilemma as well, if there's any other ideas that we could pull from. But I would like to personally get to the bottom of this and find a, a way that this policy is, is, is fair and is executed appropriately. And, and George bringing in planning as well, people from planning to.
Exactly. So. I think your point is that maybe we ought to wait till after budget season.
Which I think that, that might make sense, but I, I definitely, well.
Next spring, yeah. Come on, George.
No, I'm, I'm agreeing with him. Every Monday night, yeah, I'm just going to stand here shortly.
It will.
Yeah.
I, I think we can definitely squeeze in a, whether it be two hour, you know, the collaborative meeting. Because I, I think that's a really good idea because, you know, that, that was very constructive with what we did. And, you know, we can have the different people from planning, we can have the Duanes, you know what I mean? Everybody can come in and kind of put their two cents together and see, you know, a bunch of people coming together for, for one common goal. Because I do think that this does need attention just because, you know, we made this and building wasn't, when, when this went in, the, the price of buildings wasn't out of sight as well.
But safety and to our personnel, it doesn't change. The dollar value just increased because, no, no offense intended, but because the medical staff wants to make more money. So they're getting, they're slicing the cake too.
There we are.
Yes, I know you are.
Well, say, say back in 19 or 20, when something would have costed $50,000 to build, and nowadays it costs anywhere from $100,000. I mean, that, that's, that's quite a, a jump from when the original plan was made, because there wasn't a forecast in the construction world at that time that, you know, raises that for a given.
I, I think that trying to piggyback this on September, I mean, every Monday night now is part of what we signed up for, and I think it's, I think it's only fair. It's Sep, it's September now, it's not going to be cold weathers coming, you know, rain, snow, whatever you want to say. However, you look at it, I would, I would look ask you to maybe reconsider your thoughts and just probably throw a couple, three, four months into it, and we can get started again, and then we, we can have our piece to it.
I'm not going to change the, the way I feel and way I think on it, because, you know, it's persistence and follow through that gets stepped on.
Yeah.
And I think if we put it by the wayside, it's going to be one of those things, okay? Start a new year, we're going to have a big board, you know, chairpersons will change, whatnot. And then it's going to be picked up for the next board to, to pick up the ball and run with it. When we dealt with the issues, had the boots on the ground and, and dealing with those issues. So I think talking about it at the next meeting, talking about the strategic planning for it, I don't think that's going to hurt us. I think, you know, we could even request that, you know, see if Tracy Hattick would, would run for us again.
No, I think, I think our Chair was perfectly capable of doing that.
Well, anyway, it's just.
There are a couple perspectives. Do we want to put on the agenda for the third?
Yes.
No. There you go.
Yes, no?
Before I vote, I would just say, I think it is important for this planning board to take the lead on this. I mean, the Select Board rather than the planning board, because we're responsible as the Select Board for the classics road.
With the end all.
Pardon?
With the end all.
So if we're going to do something, I think we should organize it and invite the planning board.
Invite them and then.
To participate.
Yes. So yes, yes.
Oh, so we're voting now? I lost my thread of thought here to discuss it some more at the next meeting.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm okay with discussing it some more.
Put on the agenda. So we'll have some, some background, some details of what the last process looked like and the Select Board between now and then think about what you've already figured out tonight, but what you'd want the process to look like to review the policy in the future. We'll talk about that in more detail.
Excellent.
Great, great. Two other quick items. First, the, yesterday was our annual employee engagement event at the Merritt Hill Farm in Leeds. So in 2020, we started, because of COVID, we were trying to figure out how we could get employees together, but in a separated way. And the finance administrators, the one who suggested, hey, what about like an apple picking event? Great for families. We have, we're a very multi-generational workforce. And so having our ability to tell people who are at work for us that are grandparents, that they can bring their kids and grandkids, or folks that are young families, they can bring their kids. So we had 100 people show up at the Merritt Hill Farm to pick apples and get together under a big tent, which was fantastic. Rob was there with me. Between the two of us, we grilled hamburgers and hot dogs for the entire span of time. And, and it was, it was a great event for employees. Quite frankly, it's, it is more cost effective for the town than when we used to do holiday parties and, you know, formal at Nipple Lake or Rochester Country Club and get together. And from what I've heard, the impact is a lot greater. So the, the employees certainly appreciate the Select Board continuing to be willing to recognize employees and promote their job satisfaction, but that was an awesome event. Second thing is you came in when it was still light out, and you probably saw the 300th anniversary rock garden on the way up the steps. So that was a contribution from the Barrington Bloomers, a local nonprofit that maintains a lot of gardens in town. So they put together that rock organization as part of the tricentennial. And we're very excited to, to let it live at the town hall through the, through the end of the year. So they did a fantastic job. That was just done last Friday. So appreciate them, and they, they deserve a lot of recognition. And we look forward to working with them to help develop the plan for the rest of our gardens around the town hall. Thank you. That's all I have.
Control.
One. Um, request for you, Mr. Mantra, to sign the just approved. That's it?
Thank you. All right. Old business. Wage study employment area results.
So the wage study that the Select Board commissioned to make sure that given inflation in the labor market that we're fairly compensating our employees with the labor market. We're starting to get the results back. Again, we cast a wide net party in 15 comparable communities to make sure that we're correcting for the fact that we have bigger recreation programs than the town of Durham, but, you know, different services and different departments. Additionally, targeting the 60th percentile of wages of those 15 comparable communities, really important to make sure that our implementation isn't usually out of date. And so the, from a high level across all 45 position classifications, the minimum wage rate for these positions was identified to be about 10% below the 60th percentile of the comparable communities. And the maximum wage rate was about 5% below the, the wage rate for comparable communities across, you know, the, the 15 comparable communities. So this is a pretty similar scale of change, which the data showed back in 2019, the last time the Select Board made a sweeping adjustment. And at that time, the average wage rate change for employees was about eight and a half percent. So I share that this with you now to give you an idea of what to expect. We'll have the full report available at the October 3rd meeting. I'll present it alongside the budget presentation, the initial budget presentation. And the Budget Committee at the last meeting discussed requesting that the Select Board finalize proposed wage changes early in the process. We talked about mid-October to make sure that there aren't big items waiting towards the end of the budget process that, that could change the numbers quite a bit. So happy to answer questions now, but obviously more details to come. Yeah.
More to hear, more details.
Right, because we're definitely in a different employment area than in 2019. So that will give different impetus to acting on this.
Great, thank you. Energy Committee, committee session. We decided we'd have, remember at our last meeting, we decided we wanted an energy committee. But we need to look at, all right, what we want them to do, how we want them to do that. And I think there is, there is in your package, please. A charge. I hope that finishes the work.
Now, on that topic, I would expect that once the committee's formed, the Select Board also gives the committee members an opportunity to propose changes to the charge based on the reasons they joined the committee and whatnot. And but if it's starting with something the Select Board wants to communicate to them.
I thought on number two and number four, we should include after efficiency, cost effective, just to emphasize. I mean, we know the cost of electricity has gone up dramatically and will probably continue to do so, that these changes will be cost effective. Otherwise, I thought this looked good.
The other thing that we, oh, sorry.
So I just, I think that it's a stress for the Conservation Commission. It's now, it's how I feel about that. I know some of the Article 7. And then you got Article 2 and Article 3. Article 2 covers energy savings. And I'm assuming this is for the buildings that the town uses. And then when we get down here to 2 and 3, it's typically under A, that talks about municipal buildings, facilities and operations. And then goes fuels, vehicles, machinery, and transportation. So I think it's kind of redundant. That's how I feel it when somebody else wants to change it.
I think the idea in paragraph 2 was in fact much broader than just town buildings. I think we're, because there are some programs out there where the, where the town manages or directs it to, to Community Solar Fund to actually provide savings to the community itself, to the citizens in addition to the buildings and.
Okay, that's, that's, that's fine discussion. So that's how I, I see it with it.
With, with seven with conservation, any need to maybe add the Town Lands Committee? Use of town lands and that are coming up, when you never know where, where we might go.
It would make sense.
So it might add that to some.
The other thing we need to discuss, which I don't think we have to make decisions today, but we've, a lot of the people who asked beyond this committee are involved commercially. And so I think we need to make sure that we have explicitly conflict of interest suggestions, how to handle that. And I think you recuse yourself on, on these things, you're not thinking that's appropriate. But I think we might want to make that explicit at some point, for sure. Not as part of this chart. It's kind of a separate issue. Yeah, in my opinion. Kind of discuss that. Next.
Yeah, and I think for the Select Board, in setting expectations for the committee, I think it would be important for the Select Board to communicate how the Select Board intends for the committee members to be involved, but maybe in the future also have vested interest. And not because of any anticipated impropriety, but more so to make sure that it's clear to the community that if a project were to come out of this committee, that if there isn't low hanging fruit for a naysayer in the community to say, oh, I'm not going to support this, because the person bidding on the project was on the committee. And how the Select Board chooses to have folks involved in the committee or not involved in the committee, if you give that some thought and conversation in the public sphere now, then, you know, it can be made clear to residents that this was an open and transparent process. And we recognize that, you know, two or three members of the committee have, have involvements in this realm in the private sector, they're subject matter experts, no different than our radio communications consultant or, you know, a separate energy consultant. But maybe the Select Board has a proposal to the committee saying anybody can be a part of the committee through education and fact finding and all the rest. But when it comes time to any specific project where a proposal would be developed and project would be bid out, that anybody that might have an interest in that project would recuse themselves from the entire process. And so maybe the committee is smaller at that point. Or maybe instead of being committee members, if somebody has a vested interest, maybe they're brought in as speakers. And they're, you know, a consultant available to the committee to discuss projects or their knowledge or background. And, you know, not a member of the committee, just two ideas. But I, I think it's important now, before there's a problem or a perceived problem, to get that out. And as the Chair said, finalizing something like that the next meeting is, is good, because the committee hasn't even been formed yet.
I just think, I think along all that goes that when they have, if we do select individuals that are in this business, which can really benefit, benefit us, as, as you saw, we did a lot of the IT work here. Some of the recommendations that we received really saved the town a lot of money. And I think that if we remind the individuals, to remind other people that are saying this, you know, some of the individuals that appear on the committee to provide the knowledge and education, as you mentioned. But also the fact is, is that I don't want to cut the nose off despite my face, but if we turn around and we say to the individuals on the committee, if, if you want to provide definitive permission for the RFQ or the RFP, whichever one you want to call it, goes out, you, you can do that with the understanding that you won't bid on this project. I mean, we could say that, and, and if they don't agree with it, they can turn around and recuse themselves. And then they can just sit and wait and then bid. So, I mean, we, we should be able to allow the town the opportunity to utilize their knowledge one way or the other.
Great. So we'll continue the conversation the next meeting, but give us some thought.
Thank you.
Public safety building expansion renovation.
Before that, Mr. Chair, one item that we skipped was appointing a select real liaison to the Energy Committee.
Did you have any volunteers for that?
I couldn't, you know, just talking almost.
Maybe you can make a presentation. Maybe you can provide your.
And if they want to reach out and, and ask me for, for my professional, I would have to.
Yeah, I thought, I think as, you know, your professional opinion is going to be very valuable to this committee. But I think as a Select Board, perhaps Mr. Gibson would be the person to do this.
Rock and roll.
Glad to do it.
It's okay.
Great, thank you.
See, I couldn't, I couldn't just.
Okay. Public safety building expansion renovation. Do the principles that here. They want to do it. How's that?
It's very short. We'll be forwarding the materials to TA MacDiver so he can get them out. These were emailed to us late Friday, so we just got them today. You want me to be short? I can go under, under two minutes. There's two different proposals at this point in time, both involve going up over the bays. It's a matter of how high we're going up over the bays and what we can do with that. And the difference between those two projects is about $400,000. So we'll get the materials out to everybody. Again, my apologies, we just got them. It was too late. Um again, my apologies, we just got them. It was too late to get on the agenda, so we'll analyze, sit down, and get them out to everybody. How short enough, under two minutes?
And I think Chief John, just stay there for a second, just they have follow-up questions, but I think one of the important reasons to to have a discussion, or have a uh this topic on the agenda now and with more information to come, is because at the phase of the project that we're in, and this is in my material, uh it's still anticipated that this is a project that we'd like to propose to voters in March of twenty twenty-three. And this, i- if that stays as part of the conversation, this will likely be the single biggest ask um on the warrant in twenty twenty-three for voters to consider. Uh we're talking probably a bond and and probably a big bond, uh you know, one to half two million dollars, I don't know.
Yeah, what do you?
Two point nine, three and change.
Yeah.
Two point nine.
Two point nine, if I revise any better than mine, our method.
Well, uh.
I don't need to split breaking news, but I think the.
Yeah, two point nine, three, three.
The Select.
That's little.
It really is little, but let's hope it's just two point six, right?
The Select Board, uh it will be important for the Select Board uh to to be thinking about that ahead of the more detailed presentation. Uh so we can start uh being prepared. If that's the direction we're going to go, uh making a proposal to to voters and having a plan in place to make sure voters understand what the need is, what we'd be getting for that bond, et cetera. Obviously, this is a project which has been in the works for many years and has been conversation year after year during budget development process and deliberative session. Uh but the the memory of voters can sometimes be pretty short, uh not for any reason other than we see them a couple of times a year uh at deliberative session and voting. So uh the the, at the end of the day, this would be a proposal of the Select Board to voters uh to appropriate a bond for a project like this. Uh and so, like I said, giving, giving some thought to it, uh make sure that that's what this sitting Select Board wants to do uh in March of twenty twenty-three. Uh and how to successfully, given the economy and and everything else, uh it it won't be easy. It'll be up about two hours.
You know, the heart got me now.
I didn't, I already have it. You're a esteemed deputy chief.
Deputy chief.
Yeah, beat me to the, beat me to the inbox.
I don't know if you can answer this yet, but this projection of this building, how far will it take us into the future in meeting town needs?
We projected this at least two decades out. Standpoint. I believe, and again, in the staffing report, we looked from, and he has us at four, again, there are a couple of typos. He has us at fourteen, full-time officers were not, were thirteen. Uh and the estimated need for us was twenty-two to twenty-five, so we looked double our faction. Um and for Chief Walker, his current staff of four, we estimated later on full-time staff of twenty. So we've left plenty of room for expansion, which I think kind of got overlooked earlier on.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So more details go.
Oh, sorry. It's probably early, and I'm sure you guys are going to have a lot more to contribute, but do you and Chief Walker, at this point, like the initial, what they've come up with?
And and I'm not going to speak correct, but we, I excuse me, Chief Walker, but we did sit down, uh myself, Chief Walker, Deputy Chief Brooks, Josh, uh and it was Liam, right?
Liam.
Uh and they came to us with two proposals. One of the proposals really didn't, it just didn't fit. So the two proposals that we're seeing now are offshoots of one proposal that we sent them back with. Um so either of these are going to be acceptable. It's just a matter of what we can do. And yes, we really like the product here. The initial proposal didn't take into account our salary board, for instance. That's a big issue for us, because right now, we cannot secure a real vehicle for evidentiary purposes. If I have a full-size pickup truck that pick-your-crime of a choice occurs in, I cannot secure that vehicle for evidentiary purposes at this point in time. And we've had, we had a truck with racks for a rather serious crime that we had to call the state police into process. It was problematic for us. That got overlooked, it got readdressed, so the current state is very, very good, in my opinion. And again, I haven't, I haven't torn this apart with a fine-tooth comb yet, but it's an offshoot of what we've already seen. I plan to do that tomorrow.
So you feel retention of the individuals? This is just.
Uh a new building is certainly going to help. I mean, right now, we're squeezed in, workspaces are tight. Again, I think my generalities also speak to Chief Walker's generalities. When you can have actual workspaces where I can have three patrol officers out back and not being on top of each other, when I can have a situation where unfortunately, if you've got an arrestee in the booking room and young officer Cludier is coming into work and comes wandering through the booking room at five thirty a.m. for a six o'clock shift in her civilian clothes, and we've got an arrest in there, it's not conducive to good work. Um again, separating booking room from entrances. So, yeah, it it, yes, in a roundabout way, it absolutely addresses retention, because it makes the physical work environment better. The emotional work environment is up to me and the deputy chief to deal with, but if you can fix the physical, that certainly helps as well.
Look forward to hearing more.
I do for you.
Thanks, Troy. What time did you wake up this morning, two Troy?
Around zero one.
Okay.
Good man.
Yeah.
Is it? Was that before or after the run?
Before.
Next, um next agenda item, the petition, special town meeting. Again, I think all of us know a little bit about this, but we really want to make sure that we're just standing where we're working. Understands where we are, because we're not, we're not finished with the um special town meeting. We had a review on the thirteenth of June. Uh the Select Board presented with with a petition to call a special town meeting. Um it was, the petition was turned over to the supervisor of the checklist of certification. Uh she separately verified one hundred and forty-one signatures, more than the fifty that were required. And on the uh July seventh, supervisor returned a certified copy of the special town meeting petition to the Select Board Chair. Seventh of July, we met with the town's attorney and relevant staff. There is scheduled recommendation for the Select Board. At the June eleventh Select Board meeting, we approved that recommendation. Uh the deliberative session, the first part of the town meeting, she held on August twentieth. Um which was held at the middle school. And then the second part of the town meeting, the voting session scheduled for the eighteenth of October. Uh and it will take place in U S buildings. Uh at the twentieth of August deliberative session. The participants exercised their authority to amend the petition board article to read. Quote, you see if the town will vote to encourage the Select Board to continue the employment of Connor McIdger and Peter Royce in their current positions with the town of Barrington, and to recognize the many contributions the two have made to the town throughout their tenures. Uh this was approved by uh the majority of people at the deliberative session. Um we have prepared, uh there is a website, several websites, actually, but there is a website. In detail, we frequently ask questions. Uh what is a special town meeting and how is one called? What is a deliberative session and why are there two sessions? Can a warrant article be amended at the deliberative session? How much will the town, special town meeting cost? What is the background of the town to a tactical? Uh what are the legalities of petition board articles, and what are the petition board article passes? Uh those are all on the town's website. I would remind everyone that like the town meeting, you need to be able to vote on the eighteenth of October. Questions, comments?
I would say there was a lot of confusion at the deliberative session, as, you know, as I feel, as, you know, a member, you know, the Select Board. Um, you know, social media has changed this country um in a lot of aspects, and, you know, I encourage people to to get out, but also take what you see on Facebook and also go to the town's website, because it's not the town's position to go out and to tell people on Facebook, or if somebody has a complaint, not even this matter, to go toe-to-toe with somebody online. So it's very important that you get all of your information and then take it how you may. That's what I would like to stress to the residents of this town.
We probably all agree with that.
Yeah, those are way down. Uh the details uh of how the town meeting is to be arranged. How special town meetings work, how town meetings work collectively. And that there was some significant confusion as to as to what can be done, what is to be done at the deliberative session.
And if anybody from the town has any questions, I mean, they can always reach out to to one of us, Connor, whoever, to to get the information that, you know, the the people of the town need to to make their educated decisions.
Also, I'd like to recommend moderator, also for seeking information.
Yeah.
Thanks. Yeah. Available for questions, comments, actions. Town's decision of nineteen, what, nineteen ninety-six? To adopt this form of government.
Oh, S P two, yes.
I mean, number one S P two was tense. Four ninety-six. Okay, recreation field improvement. It's an opportunity uh to grant, there is a grant um to build and, but the grant's not going to cover everything. There is some um materials that will help the highway department will be involved in that.
This is a no-brainer for me. Um, you know, if they need to fill out of there, we got a spot for it. Makes sense.
Is that a motion?
I will make the, if there's no other further comment from the board, I would like to make a motion to authorize the highway department to assist the recreation department with the field improvements, which will result in shared benefits between the two departments.
My second.
Yes, the road agent's comments.
Pretty good motion on the floor.
That's true. Okay, all those in favor?
Yeah, be all right.
Land sale, land sale auction. Biggest, the biggest concern, we'd already voted, we already have voted to put these properties up for auctions. Question that now resolves about the homestead, which is obviously the largest of the parcels and is somewhat problematic and outside of the auctioneer's proposed, it's two, two-phase approach that they've used in the past. And with some success, we can maximize bids that we get on this and provide some alternatives to someone trying to bid for the whole project as as a single big chunk of land.
Mr. Chair, I meant.
Yeah.
The fear is, we get to the auction and try to auction off all as one, and nobody bids on it. And we end up in the same situation that we did when we advertised the request for proposals and and nobody put in for it. At the end of the day, the town has goals. The town doesn't want to own this property. The town, these decisions the Select Board has made, the the town wants this property back on the tax rules. And uh we've, we've tried the very creative approach with the RFP and the conditions and the requirements and uh back in whatever was the Select Board. Uh it may, the Select Board decided that the right approach with the homestead was to auction it. And so uh in meeting with the auctioneer, they they proposed this, and hey, look, we we deal with all sorts of things. And uh the best thing is to essentially have a plan B that's built in, that's advertised, and so we'll auction it all at once, see what the highest bid is. Then we'll, the the next item of the auction will be auctioning the four quadrants, essentially uh as individual units. And if there's more value derived from selling them as four partial units, great. And um that would be what we would do. Uh and if not, if the more value was as a whole, then that's how it would sell. Uh and regardless, they'd have to, you know, if it was broken up into the four quadrants, they'd have to either merge the lots or go back to planning, uh which is good, you know, the the benefit of selling it as a whole is that this is, you know, a planning board-approved project, et cetera, et cetera. You start breaking it up, then it changes that, but we build that into the requirements. So uh it's a little bit creative, but this is a a very unique situation the town's in, owning a failed subdivision and trying to sell it off tax-dated property.
I think that four, four quadrants would work out nice.
Yeah.
If we're not going to, at least the taxpayers would get something out of it.
Is it, is there more title searching and like surveying or something to to divvy that up that we do beforehand, or?
Nope, we wouldn't do any of that. We would just draw the quadrants uh among the existing lot lines. So, you know, these, this group of lots, this group of lots, that would be offged up. Uh and it would be the responsibility of the purchaser to work out, you know, all the rest. They're going to be, uh it isn't anytime you buy tax-dated property, there's total work that's required. Uh a lot of times what they do is what's called a quiet title action, uh which is essentially where you, you know, go to the courts and to the registry and say, hey, speak now and forever hold your peace. If anybody has property interests in this property, speak up now, or if not, then the courts will decide that I have all of the property loans. Uh but that takes time and money, and the folks that that buy and sell tax-dated properties, well, this word usually wants to sell tax-dated properties, but they know this. So just look for a decision on on that two-phase approach.
Are there restrictions that that we can put on the quadrants, or is that not a?
You certainly could. What do you have in mind?
Well, I mean, you know, one of the definite needs in this town is for for elderly housing or, you know, to, you know, fifty-five plus. And, you know, I don't know, it it it's hard, because, you know, you you can, you can picture one way where the economy is going to go, building whatnot. I mean, it's a very difficult time to get get rid of a a large problem parcel.
So we tried that. I mean, we can certainly make those requirements, reinstitute those requirements, but we tried that with the RFP in a more collaborative approach than just kind of a one-and-done oxygen, uh auction, excuse me. Uh and so I would say that uh the advice from the auctioneer was the fewer restrictions, the better, especially if you've had trouble auctioning it. And and that's a specific.
So this, this is one of the pickles we're in, right? We're we're looking for commercial real estate in town, something, you know, something fifty-five plus where it's it's not going to have, you know, a a direct impact on our system. We break this up into four quadrants. Now we give developers in there, and okay, I can squeeze in, you know, four house lots here and five house lots. Now we have that many more residents using, you know, the P P W, um whether or not the, you know, the town takes the road over, if it gets fixed, you know, if there's more plowing. Um and then there's more people for our fire and EMS to uh potentially take care of. So that is a hundred percent in in my thought process at approaching this. Um, you know, what what isn't, how can we impact the town positively with the the sale of this problem parcel?
So the, so let me just help, help me to understand, if we advertise it for fifty-five and over, we still have all those same issues of increasing population and roads and fire and emergency.
Not as bad, because generally, you know, if you're fifty-five plus, you don't have a first grader going into school and or, you know, have a whole family where they're going to come in and use their schools, and then that much more trash, so on and so forth. Not saying that they might not have a son or daughter that lives with them, because, you know, they've fallen on hard times, but that's, that's in my idea of the.
Right, so it seems like less impact on the schools, but theoretically more impact on fire and safety.
Fire safety, D P W. I mean, unless, you know, I, you know, once again, you're going to go far, weeds of like, okay, you know, you you guys have to have a you know, dumpsters on site, you know, and try for this, but it consists.
Yes, emergency is probably what I should have.
From what I understand, the homestead site, given its location, doesn't have enough amenities. It's not close to um medical services and grocery and things like that. And so all the federal grants you try to go after to develop fifty-five-plus housing are going to work for the homestead, for its pace.
Okay. And one of the troubles too is that the zoning, as it exists there, it's it's zoned for general residential. And so, you know, the, even the problem with the RFP that we put out, in order to develop it, how the lands committee and Select Board recommended and asked developers to look at it would require a parent from the zoning board or zoning to change, which is a big uphill battle for developers. Uh and I guess, just zooming out a little bit, the Select Board has already decided to sell this at auction, or already under contract to the auctioneer to sell it at auction. The the only decision kind of left to be made is, are we? The the only decision kind of left to be made is, are we going to sell it all as one? Or take the advice of the auctioneer and be prepared to sell it all as one or broken up?
And we have a minimum bid.
No, all of them are no minimum.
So somebody could cut in on all four lots for a dollar?
They could.
Well.
But the trouble is, if you have the coordinates set up that way, somebody can come in and say, bid on the whole property like 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 Jim just said, pay a dollar, then somebody else comes in and says, well, wait a minute, he paid a dollar for all of it. Why don't I give four dollars for this piece? At least I'll get one for four dollars if that was the case, but, you know.
So we make three bucks.
That's right, exactly. That's all we got, you know, but we don't have to worry about the road because I haven't come with the person that buys the property.
And let's be clear, this isn't a revenue generating.
No, I understand. No, I'm just.
We can only collect what is due to us. Anything that that the property sells for in excess of what's due to us goes back to the former owner. The the long-term benefits of the town is not owning property which has liability and having property on the tax rules. Well, we will collect more in future property tax revenue in six years than what is owed to us. And so thinking about it from a dollars and cents perspective.
Do you know what is owed to us?
About a hundred and fifty thousand.
There's actually a number of intentions.
I mean, if if that's the question that that we're going to answer right now, sell it as for a whole, I mean, I mean, it's kind of tied. We're going to do that. We're going to tie it, sell it if if we're locked in.
I I would go whatever the auctioneer's recommendation is to ensure a sale.
We need a motion.
Like make the author, I would make a motion to authorize the two-phase auction of the homestead property as proposed by the auctioneer.
Second.
Second, first, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. No more rural business, new business. Shall we do the we do the agenda item that we moved down?
I thought we'd do that the end of your business.
Okay, we can do that. That sounds good. Okay. Childhood cancer awareness week. Last proclamation, if you had a chance to read that.
I I suggest we just go right to a motion and I would make a motion to proclaim September twenty-fifth to October one is can't childhood cancer awareness week in Barrington.
I will second. Let me quickly read the proclamation then. Thousands of children are diagnosed each year across America with pediatric cancer affecting not only lives of patients, those are families, friends, professionals, and the entire communities. And whereas continued research is necessary to find new methods to treat prevent childhood cancer, the previous advances having significantly increased the survival rate of pediatric cancer in the last several decades. And whereas despite these advances, pediatric cancer remains the leading cause of death by disease of children age fourteen and younger. And whereas awareness is necessary to encourage increased funding for research, education, and support treatment of all childhood cancers and other issues. Now, therefore, we, the Barrington and Hampshire Select Board, together with our residents, do hereby proclaim the week of September twenty-fifth October first, two thousand twenty-two, with child with cancer awareness week in the town of Barrington. We'll sign until all.
Did we vote?
Call a vote.
Oh, did vote.
Uh, second motion made.
We just motioned and seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And they don't get a moment. Lakeside Oaks culvert replacement bean application for project engineering. Apparently there are deficiencies in the metal culverts under the Lakeside Oaks Drive, so that when they try to draw down the Swain Lake, draw down Swain Swain Lake, they have to do it slowly so that it's not overwhelm those culvert load.
Yes.
I did not, okay.
Can you give me some background on the relationship of the town with private roads and these kind of situations?
This is a one-off. This is, this is very unique. The town, with few exceptions, the town is not required to rely on private classic roads or anything of of importance. Maybe the next closest example is the town's town forest is on Swain Road. Swain Road starts as a paved, town-maintained, class-five road. And then where it turns to gravel, it turns to class six, which is unmaintained by the town. And there's been a lot of conversation in the past about the fact that the town advertises and promotes a town forest which is on a road that is maintained by the town.
Right.
So the the thing that's most unique about the Lakeside Oaks Drive and the Swain Lake Dam is the only way to get to the dam is from Lakeside Oaks Drive. And this dam is one of the most critical pieces of infrastructure in town. And so our, our options are very limited. One of the, we're trying to accomplish a lot in this project, other than just replacing the culvert. One of the things we're trying to accomplish is expanding our right-of-way access to the dam. So we have deeded right-of-way on the lot itself over some private property. But part of that right-of-way goes through us. And we rely on the the willingness of neighbors to let us take access from their property. That's not how a town should rely on accessing. It's one of the critical pieces of infrastructure in town. And so the the fact that it's a private road is makes it a little bit more complicated, but doesn't change at all the need to to be able to protect the infrastructure and use it as we need to to manage our needs to include letting water out of the dam and to those culverts. Most recently, the Mother's Day floods of two thousand fifteen, I think. They had to let so much water into the dam that not only that culvert washed out, but also the culvert that crosses Hall Road washed out. And, you know, being able to operate the dam and not have fear of damaging further infrastructure and costing more money is important. So it's unique, very unique. And I've asked around in other communities and and it's even unique across the states. But we're trying to fix it. We're not just sweeping the problem in the rug. We're we're trying to address the long-term solution. And the point of this request is to do so with some of the public government's money.
Do we have to appropriate seventy thousand with what we passed earlier for the roads and bridge fund?
No. Nope, you could say that as a funding source, we'd like to use the the SB four oh one money. So that would be certainly be an option that the select board has. This, like I said before, there's, there's more projects than there is money. And so whether you use it now or use it on as part of the capital plan that Mark will be presenting with his budget, it doesn't really make a difference. We had planned to use the bridge and call it capital reserve. So that's why I presented it that way. The money's available. We've set it aside for a purpose. But honestly, it doesn't make a difference, whatever.
Well, I was going, saving the the those other funds for the engineering of future projects will make those projects more competitive and increase our chances of getting more money. So I think using the culvert money for this is wiser.
And we do, you know, we already have we have already appropriated, this money already exists for this, for this kind of thing. So I would suggest to take it out of the capital reserve. If we could have a motion for one or the other.
I'll make a motion to take it out of the capital reserve. For the appropriate. Yes.
Engineering task. Number seventeen for engineering is going to be applications. While I decide of culvert placement.
I will second that.
I cannot rely on hope, just the fact, so I am a no. No.
Yeah, be all right.
Um, if I vote in favor, aye.
Give it a aye.
Don't you know?
I really knew.
Man, sure, aye. Three five. Mistake to bond the dam. It was. Okay, there's later contractor rates. Certainly, all red. Mr. Maro, this is rationale, the quest for this increased. Any questions? Any comment? Questions for Mr. Maro?
I see a trend here. You you know, i- i- it seems like every meeting that we're in, it's more money, more money, more money, let's spend, let's spend, let's spend. And God, I know times are changing and and whatnot, but when when's it, when's it going to come to a a stop, guys? Not saying that it has to on this one, but, you know, is everybody going to leave us and and go plow for the state? You know what I mean? That's one of the questions I have. You know, and if you go plow for the state and, you know, you local in Barrington, do you get to choose your routes? Do you get to work with the great staff that, you know, we're blessed to have in this town? I don't, I'd like to hear from Mark and, you know, sort it all collectively together and see what we can come up with. Because if we keep saying yes to everything and more money and spending more money, our taxes are going to go up and everybody's going to look at, hey, where where is this all coming from? If it's validated, you know, I'm okay with it.
Any other questions in terms? Mark, can you comment on?
I really hope I don't have to explain to everybody how much the cost of everything has gone up out here. If you've never owned a heavy truck, you really probably aren't even qualified to talk about it. They're nothing but a money pit. These people that want to put these trucks together, basically to run four months out of the year, if they're lucky, maybe turn a dollar. They do it for a lot of them do it out of loyalty to the town. Others do it because they somewhat still enjoy it, but it's a dying breed. There's nobody out here to take these guys' place to speak of. They're not lined up at the door. So the price of tires is ridiculous. What was a two-hundred-dollar tire eight years ago is now a four-hundred-dollar tire. We cover their fuel, yes, but the wear and tear on the trucks, it's all gone up. Truck paths are ridiculous. Just the engine oil, the change the oil in the things is ridiculous. So we would be in a mess without these people, three of them in particular. They're all starting to get a few, a little age on them. They're starting to get a little crotchety because they're getting a few ages on, a little bit of age on them. They're starting to get old, they're miserable. They want to quit, but they don't want to leave the town hanging either. So this is why they're still here. We need to keep them happy. So I've used the state formula as the baseline. It always works. It's fair. It eliminates the risk from the contractor. They don't have to worry about their fuel. The two-week guaranteed minimum precludes them from basically spending all the money upfront to register, insure, get the truck ready for winter. It, they don't have a, they don't have that kind of risk to worry about. These guys are loyal. You'd be hard pressed to find anybody as dependable and loyal as these people that we have. And like I said, if we had to live without them, the storms would look a little different around here. So I realize a buck's a buck. I get it. And it does, it does seem like every time I come up here, I'm asking for more money. I'll give, I'll grant you that.
Not just you.
It's the way it is. I don't know how else to explain it.
Well, what we're faced with is we have to explain to the town, why do that taxes?
Understand, understand. And I don't like presenting these things to you any more than you like hearing them from me. But if I don't take care of the people under my direct control, then I'm lacking my duty. If I let these guys go because I'm scared to come up here and fight for it, shame on me.
So do these three individuals reach out to you and go, hey, if you don't pay us this month, we're out?
Nope, absolutely not. These, at least two of these individuals have been courted by other towns numerous years, and they've always stayed, and they never once held my heels to the fire and said, you either pay me more or else. It's my duty to take that upon myself to do that. You can't, you can't pay people that have to do the outlay of owning one of these trucks. You can't pay them less than what it's worth, or it just becomes foolish to even go out there and do it. I was in this racket for forty years doing that exact same thing. There's not much money in it to begin with by the time you figure everything out. They're just doing it for the love of it most of the time. They enjoy doing it. If that goes away, well, God help us.
Fairly. Thank you. Mark, how are you? Hope you're doing well. Have a question. Is the hours that we spend on doing our snow removal, is there any way of adjusting the hours to help compensate for some of the monies that we spend then when they're not actually on the road? And the reason I say this, sometimes, in my opinion, they have individuals come out earlier or, you know, than they, than than the part of the area that I'm in. Or is do they come out at the right time? I don't know. I'm asking you as a director, is there any way that you can shorten the hours that we're using these individuals to help compensate for this setting with a ten dollars an hour increase?
Mark, not to cut you off, but maybe just before, a quick sixty-second history lesson. So I want to remind the board that one of the first things that Mark did when he started as road agent is for two years in a row, he reduced the budget for winter contractors based on the what you're talking about, George. You, Mark, directing the orchestra of winter maintenance, using our own staff, managing the overtime budget and using outside contractors, Mark optimized that. And if you give me a second, I can pull up the actual dollars and cents, but we're talking about saving tens of thousands of dollars. I think in the first year between overtime, winter contractors and salt usage, we saved over fifty thousand dollars.
But no, no, no offense intended. I'm just going to shut you off right here.
Okay.
As I said, we're talking about his request that he came before us. Selectman Jim here brought up a good question, and I'm just following up to asking him a a question. I'm not questioning what he did before. And what he did before for us was outstanding, and the reduction of the salt and sand that he did. And then the application of the liquid ice melt that he's putting down. I I know all this. I'm just asking him a basic question. Is there any other, is there, is there any room left to do it? That's the question I put forward to him.
I personally think if we do it any different than the way we're doing it, we're asking for trouble. If you try to save dollars, if you try to save pennies on something like an ice storm.
But, Mark, we're not paying a penny. You're asking for a hundred and five dollars from a ninety-five. I understand that. And I ask a simple question is, and and I'm not trying to get in the pesting contest with you. I'm just asking you for right of, is there any other way that you could adjust the hours in any way that we've had, like from before?
Not without something else, not without taking a chance on something else suffering.
What would that something else be, sir?
A lot more accidents.
Yeah, I don't follow you on that part. Do you have an explanation?
If we're late getting out, okay, if we try to save a few hours.
Okay, that, I wish you would have said it that way. All right, now I understand where you're coming from, okay.
How much is a fatal? How much is a fatal accident worth? That's, that's the stuff that I have to live with, okay? If somebody goes off the road because of negligence on my part, or something that could be even concocted as negligence on my part.
Yes, terror say says as long as the town is making an effort to, to get all the town responsible.
Well.
How long is it? How long, I'm not, I'm not kidding. Thanks, Mark.
I would like to, because, you know, we're we're talking about a ten-dollar difference for the the heavy trucks and close to eight bucks for the the small trucks. I would like to see. I would like to see, you know, with the average hours for those and the impact on, I, I know you can't predict the weather, just like the weatherman does such a great job at, but you know, historically, you know, over the last couple of years, our snow loads have been less. Yes, we've gotten more ice storms. But how much is this $10 and $8 gonna, gonna impact us overall? You know, and then where do you think that we should appropriate the money for this? Where should we come up?
And I can answer that now because we've, we've done that. And so it's about a 10% increase. The current winter contractor budget is $100,000. And so the expecting to see a winter contractor budget of about $110,000 is reasonable. The, in 2020, if it was 19, the winter contractor budget was 133,000. And so even increasing it 10 or $15,000 this year going into 2023, that's still less than it was when Mark started and has posted as road agent. And, and so.
I agree that that, that is a great job and, you know, I'd love to see more of that, but you know, you know, we saved there, but you know, we have to look, you know, wind stands for what's important now. And, you know.
So $10,000 is the answer, Richard?
Yep. Excellent. Where would we get the funds for that?
The operating budget.
And those are available?
Yes. Yep, the budget is expended about 72,000, 72,000 right now.
That's the carriers until the second Tuesday in March, correct?
The end of the calendar year. If we're.
Your budget.
Okay.
So if we get to December, what's the expectation of how much of that we'll have spent?
So one of the, and Jim hit it perfect, is, is there so much variability to it? And so select boards years past made the very savvy decision to establish a capital reserve for emergency snow funds. So there's a capital reserve available with $200,000 in it. Should we experience an above-average demand in, in winter maintenance, whether that be materials or contractors or overtime, et cetera? And so we don't since my tenure, we haven't dipped into that, and we haven't needed to dip into that, but that's the, the what-if.
So
That's reassuring.
Please be mindful that we have not had a represent, a really representative winter in my estimation since I've been here.
Right. So part of me would wanna see the contracts in between, you know, the contractors and the town and, and kinda how that looks, you know? Cause I heard a little bit about two weeks guaranteed. I don't know what that was in regards to, or if they have allotted hours, like Kay said, you signed on. You know, it's, you know, you're gonna get paid for 40 hours every two weeks, whether it snows or whether it doesn't, if there's a setup like that, I mean.
So the, the guaranteed minimum is basically 20 weeks of winter. They get paid 10 hours bi-weekly for the 20 weeks of winter. So there's, there's 10 pay periods where they get the rate, 10 hours of the rate that that truck would make every two weeks.
Whether it goes out or it don't.
Whether it goes out or it doesn't. If, if it goes out, if, if they go out and they work a, a 10-hour storm, okay, that, that goes away. It's not an extra, it's not a giving. It's basically just to cover the costs. If they get completely skunked in one winter and, and never come out, at least they've somewhat tried to cover the cost of registration, insurance, inspection.
We can get you a copy of the contract.
Yeah. There's something creative that we can do in there, or I don't know, just speaking out loud, just.
But I think if they, they file their federal income tax, that they, they also use that as a expense that helps lower their payment to the federal government.
You gotta make it before you can expense it.
But if we're paying $1,000 a week.
How restrictive is the capital reserve? Can that be tapped to offset prices for some winter snow removal, some other way to offset the increase?
Yeah, so I mean, I think it would be reasonable. And your question for the trustees, the trust funds, they're the gatekeepers. But I think it would be reasonable to expect the town to utilize the existing operating budget before utilizing the capital reserve. And so you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't personally ask them to tap into that capital reserve until it uses our.
Okay. I was thinking to the point after ended the calendar year and the new budget cycle, and you know, trying to do that, but it makes sense if it's in the operating budget now.
There's a lot of variables for the input of that funding too, so.
Well, it seems to me that I'm like you, Jim, I like to watch the dollars too, but I'd also like to watch what we're doing. And it this isn't just making the roads look nice. This is saving people's lives and saving our community lots of problems. If we can keep, I mean, we have some of the best looking roads in the winter around. And if we can keep those people happy and we can keep them doing this, and I think not not paying them appropriately is, is a real waste.
It doesn't seem like an exorbitant increase either. I mean, it's, it's below the state pay level for the other, the state plow contract.
Who don't do a very good job relative to hopefully you.
So if I may, one of the problems that Barrington has is from a snow standpoint and an ice standpoint, we are very topogonically challenged. What isn't it, you know, if, if you're in a town that's flat, you can get by with just coming out every few hours, just standing the hills, the curves and the stop signs. Well, everything in this town is a hill or a curve with very few exceptions. So we don't have that luxury. And if, if we let these areas get away from us and you start having wrecks, you wanna hear some public outcry, you'll be hearing it.
But, but you know, and I, I don't like that because, you know, people also have to be mindful in winter because God forbid.
They're not.
Exactly. So, so is, is it a damn if you do, damned if you don't? You know what I mean? Cause you, cause you, you know, you, you get it from both ends because, you know, if you're going in an ice storm and you know, oh man, I gotta leave three hours before work because I have to crawl because I don't know the, you know, conditions. And if, you know, you get somebody else that goes, oh, well, I'm late, I'm just gonna go at speed.
And there's more of them than there are.
I mean, you play stupid games, you win stupid prizes. Yep.
And if you don't, though, also includes overtime costs for the fire department and the police department. Because now the roads aren't treated and we're just handling wreck after wreck after wreck after wreck, which includes calling in staff.
Is, is, is there any way that you could negotiate for that, on those hours to use a reduced cost if they don't go out? How do you think that would work if you discussed with someone? Suppose we, what I'm saying is, so this, this hypothetically now, this board turns around and says, all right, buck fives is fine, we'll go ahead and we'll pay that. But what, but when your contract has them not going out and paying them a buck five, is there a figure that you can use if you don't go out, you get paid the standard rate, the old rate of 95? How do you think, you know, we're looking at money, to save money right here. Because you know, everybody else sitting in here, we're, we're gonna be faced with a, a building, we're gonna be faced with a increase in wages. With an increase in wages comes benefits along with it. We, we, overall, we have this. So when we say to you, Mark, is there any way, or I say, excuse me, I say to you, all right, if we went to 105 for actual plowing time, and then for the time that they don't go out, we turn around, we go back to the old standard of 95. So if they didn't go out, then they'd get 95 instead of 105. I mean, that's, that's, it's, it's pennies as you call it.
No.
But it's, but to us, if we watch the pennies, the dollars will follow. And that's, that's the case we have to do.
I, I understand your position. I don't, I don't make light of what you guys have to do.
Do you have an answer for me?
We could explore that.
I, I think that was very creative. Something on the line of, that's why I wanted to see the contract. And, and that makes sense because if they're not going out, you know, they're, they're not banging on the tires, banging on the rest of the body. You know what I mean? It's just to cover the cost to, to own and, and somewhat maintain and register, so.
Yeah, that's, that's a viable alternative.
I would, I would be more, I would be almost willing to, you know, entertain that because that makes sense to me.
Kinda remind me what our operating budget is for the year.
7.6 million.
7.6 million. So we're talking about 10,000 or maybe 7, 8,000 if.
Maybe I'll pass on with 10, but the, because there's other costs that, so already built into the contract is the fuel allowance, which is gonna cost us more in, in 2022. So, but anyways, yeah, in that neighborhood.
So I guess my point is, this is the, the difference in what you're proposing here of a couple of thousand dollars is pretty minor in our overall operating budget. Right? 7.8 million?
Joyce, I, I, what I'm saying to you is, we have the whole town in order to consider. So if we can save as, as you said, a couple of thousand dollars, if we can save that kind of money, that means we can still work at having money for other things. But, cause everybody's gonna be coming in with money to spend, money to spend. And if we just did it on a one-on-one individual, we would be there. But pretty soon, we would have to attack other, our other resources, and pretty soon that's gonna start to dwindle.
Right.
And, and, and that's why, and I'm not trying to be nasty, I really am not. I'm just saying, we just have to do a little bit at a time.
Right. But I think based on what we're hearing from our experts in the room, we're a little bit of penny foolish for the pound or however that goes. You know, I, I'm concerned about the public health in this community, and I want people to travel safely on their roads. And it feels like we can do that for this year for a little expenditure of money.
My question to Mark was to pay him the 105 when they plow. And if they don't go out on the road, to give them the 95. So the 95, still gonna take care of the maintenance of the truck, the insurance, and, and what is this, 400, 400 and something registration numbers, it's 600?
Uh, probably closer to eight or a thousand to.
Yeah, then you get the insurance that else goes, but there's still, we're, we're still saving, saving a couple of thousand, but they're not going out on the road plowing, so it doesn't interfere with anybody's health or anything else.
So you can sell it to those contractors?
It's how we have to operate, you know? It's you know? So that's, that's what I've been saying for.
So this, this is just scratching the surface of some very difficult discussions we're gonna be having in the next few months.
Well, I, I, you seem sentimental.
Yeah. So this is the type of business you're either gonna do it or you're not.
Mr. Walker has a comment too.
Like last year, the state was down approximately 100 plowed trucks. That had a pretty significant impact on the town of Barrington. They, because of the shortage of state plows, the state roads were not maintained to the level that they needed to be. And our accident rates went up significantly. And not only are the vehicles that are going off through and getting accidents, but we still have to try to get emergency vehicles there. And in some cases, we actually had to call a road agent and pull his people off the town road and get to a state road so that we could safely get a fucking ambulance in there. Reason I bring this up is I witnessed firsthand the lack of plow trucks, that the state and the Hampshire struggled to hire people, not because of the money, but because people are deciding they don't wanna do this anymore. It's, and the, the issue is, is you need to try to hang on to the three people that he uses as subcontractors because there ain't six other ones beating the doors down to take their places. And, and I agree with Joyce, that's really, it's short money to make sure that them three people that know their roots and can get out and do these jobs and can actually help us out. We need it. That's, that's short money. And you guys, you, you don't wanna take a chance of losing them people.
But Rick, people are gonna use that expression, short money, this whole budget thing. What we've, what we've said to them is, if they're not going out, maybe they can negotiate the state at 95 and then pay them the 105. Everybody's happy. Safety is not a, a key issue. We're asking him to make this presentation. He, he said he could make the presentation, but he's gonna have a tough time to sell. And I said, well, as far as I'm concerned, we, we need to start now and, and go to it and not wait. Was that one time, one year we stayed here till 12:30, not here, but in the meeting to 12:30 to make decisions on money and what have you. We don't need to do that in the end to try to keep bringing it down. We can start now. And if he comes back to us and said, George, they, they, they would do it for 100, but they wouldn't do it for 95. I, I would feel like I accomplished something, but would, would at least give us that opportunity.
I'm not disagreeing.
Thank you.
Said, but what I am telling you is, it's in the town's best interest to do what he needs to do to keep them people. Because you, when he loses two within plow trucks, them guys right now take about two and a half hours to get around their route. If you lose two plow trucks and you don't replace them, then it's gonna force him to have this guy get three and a half hour route. And I can tell you, if it was somebody that plowed, if it's snowing at the rate of two or three inches an hour, you know, he'd been up in two hours. Say nothing about taking four hours to get around that route. And that creates a problem when you're trying to run a two-wheel drive indoors to somebody's house at 2:00 in the morning.
All I have asked is to try to talk to these people and come back to us. And I have not said, I'm not gonna do it. I've said, can we do this thing? I'm all done. I'm all done.
Point is, work with them people. It's in our footprint, not in the means.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other, any others that questions or any concerns, any, any motion that we'd like to make here? A lot of response.
Connor, with, being new to the budget process and knowing that we're gonna see increases in energy, fuel and heating and those kinds of costs going up, other materials, do we have any, when will we have a handle from the town's perspective on revenues, business expenses? And like whether or not these, you know, expected increases would align with expected revenues that we have to work with? Like, when do we know that we're gonna be out of budget?
Yeah, it's a great question. And I would say that I wouldn't expect a lot of revenue increases. So the market-driven revenue we collect, the two biggest buckets are motor vehicle registrations and building permit fees. So we collect about $2 million a year in motor vehicle registrations and about $200,000 a year in building permit fees. So those are market-driven, right? Because as pricing cars go up, the price of car registrations go up. The problem is, there's an inverse effect. As the price of cars go up, then the availability of cars decreases. Fewer people are buying cars and fewer people registering new cars, they're registering older cars. So I reported to the budget committee at our last meeting that for the first time in seven years, we've seen a reduction in the motor vehicle registration revenue. Not a dramatic reduction, but there's been a pretty steady upward trend and, and that trend has stopped. As far as building permit fees, similarly, as building costs go up, a few people are building. They're gonna delay those projects. And so there's not really, is, you know, when, when inflation impacts our operating budget expenditures, there's not a, an equal and opposite benefit to our revenue. And so the, how the budget process works is we look at revenue and expenditures through the whole process. You know, right now, we have a $7.6 million budget and we have about $4 million that we collect and collected locally, collect revenue. The balance is, is made up by property taxes. And so as we start to look at, you know, an, an operating budget, a $7.8 million operating budget, there's a lot of conversation about how that would impact the property tax rate. Right now, our property tax rate, local tax, municipal tax rate is $2.95,000. So 295 of the 1950 comes to the town. That makes up the difference to get our $7.6 million budget. So having with a $1.4 billion valuation, a change of $140,000 is about 10 cents on the tax rate. And so that, you know, if, if we increase the budget $140,000 and there's no other changes in revenue, our municipal tax rate would be $3.05, kind of at a high level. So we track that through the budget process, so the select board's making decisions eyes wide open.
So, because I don't wanna risk losing these contractors, I'm gonna move the question and I'm gonna put a motion on the floor to make a motion to increase the winter contract rates from 95 to 105 for heavy to make a motion to increase the winter contract rates from ninety five to a hundred and five for heavy trucks and from sixty eight to seventy five for pickups with a plow as recommended by the road agent. Is there a second?
I would second. Okay, there's a second. Any other discussion?
I have discussion for, he brought, Mark brought this forward to us. We have another meeting coming up next month. I think that it's supposed for us to turn around, start by spending money right away without first seeking to mark the opportunity to come back to us next week and tell us for the next meeting, excuse me, whether it's going to work or not work. That that's all, that's all I've asked Mark to do is and then Mr. Secoshin said to say things, get some negotiations going. See, see what they'll take and what they won't take. If they won't take it, then we can turn around and vote and and have that have that go. So that's 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 my discussion.
Any other discussion? Take a vote. Scapio.
Hi.
Yes, hi. Discussion.
No.
Mr. K.
No.
Metric values fine.
Yes, we don't need discussion.
School impact fee change recommendation. Basically, uh we support the planning board's position, the recommendation on the existing school impact fee basically eliminating.
So we were told at planning board that uh legal had said that we needed to um eliminate the um school impact fee because the current middle school is paid off. So if we wanted to look at reinstituting an impact fee for the future, we could do that, but this one legally we had to vote to end it. Do you have anything different to add to that?
No, yeah, that's perfect. So what you'll hear from the planner during the budget development process is that the planning board would like to look at uh impact fees in the future, maybe for public safety, maybe for school. Uh but it's an opportunity to have an alternative funding source um to offset the growth that we're experiencing. Uh but like Cycros and Capiola said, that that requires uh a study, uh an impact fee assessment. Uh Bruce Dave Ari is the one who had done it previously. It's a comprehensive process that's dictated by the state.
I would like to make a motion to send a letter to the planning board expressing the support for the proposed changed school impact fees.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Right. Okay, um the Hampshire National Association Legislative Policy Conference voting value.
I had a question on that. Since you were on that board or
You're on the committee.
On the committee, what is going to be up for um the vote on since you'll be the voting member and how do you plan on voting?
Well, there were, there are actually be several um policy changes. They're not changes, even, they're just predictions to the chamber. The committee I worked on uh wanted to make sure that that we recommend to the legislature. What they do is what the M A, N H, M A lobbies for basically uh for the legislature. One is to reduce uh the cost of the fees that that we have to pay and the unfunded mandates to towns. There are three other, two other committees that I didn't part of, but that's the sort of thing. Basically, these are try to make our governments work a little better. Uh some of it applies directly to us, uh some of it doesn't. It's it applies mostly to the larger cities that doesn't affect us.
Which which of those that we exist?
Well, some of these unfunded mandates, for example, means and then the finance and the other, the other two, the other two committees, I'm not sure what they're working on, they will be arguing to debate.
So it's not about the unfunded ones. Uh how much more are you talking about? How much more is the school going to ask if they take care of some of those unfunded items?
The school?
Yeah, when we're talking about the on this group here, they talk about the legislative policy coming up there for the municipal association because they make the laws for the schools too.
No, they don't.
They don't?
No, they don't lobby for the schools. It's a separate organization that does the schools.
Thank you very much.
Again, this is basically just our lobbying organization.
Yeah, no, understood. Just that's my solution. That's all.
Um so generally I'll add is that the full list of the policy positions um is like to our board.
I could.
No, yeah, but if you have questions or want to see the details, um I'd be happy to talk to them about them also. Uh but because we pulled off the consent agenda when we're ready to close the subject, we'd still need a motion.
Good point.
Right. Take a motion to the point there. Delegate this committee.
Yeah, we have one vote.
No. Well, that's.
If everyone had done, I mean, if everyone, if everyone comes, we're still going to get one vote. Yeah, and look, look through, they're pretty, I don't know what the number is. It's probably somewhere around thirty or forty total proposals for policy. Again, it's to direct the M H, N H M A's lobbying activity.
Do we need a second to?
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Foresty truck sliding unit.
That's also me. Yeah. Uh questions from going uh old to the new truck, I'm sure we'll hear Mr. Walker's big old plan. I read the, read the blurb, but.
Or so uh twenty twenty three is is in line for when we were going to project it to replace the current four if your truck could be thirty years old. Uh this spring we lost the pump. Uh we took it apart, the housing gets split. Uh we brought it up to Anderson Welding. Uh they welded it for us. Uh in internals on the pump were getting pretty um corroded just from the water that's been through there for the last twenty years. Um we uh looked at replacing the pump. It would have been about fifteen thousand dollar cost because they don't make that pump anymore. We're going to retrofit it. So we said, well, let's put it together and we don't have a lot of money in it. We did that. Uh the tank uh just before the sea forest season started this spring, one of the seams split in August, uh came into the station one morning when the water was running out of the bottom of the tank, had some holes in it. Um again, we went to be the fine folks in Anderson Welding. Um he kind of looked at it and says, look, I'll I'll do what I can for you. He says, we just want to try to get through the rest of this season until it snows. Um what we're looking to do, the new forestry truck. Um we'll be back in a little bit. This current forestry truck has a pump mounted to the chassis down underneath the truck and a two hundred gallon tank that sits in the back of the utility body that's permanently plumbed there. So it sits there there in the sixty five days a year. Um the new forestry truck that we're looking at doing would have the same type of body, but we would have what you call a sliding unit in the back of it. So during the forest fire season, that sliding unit would be maintained in the truck. Um when it got to winter and we didn't need that, we would remove the sliding unit, store it and turn the truck into a uh a more versatile utility truck, uh either use it for assisting rescues or um going out and chasing uh down wires, trees down, that kind of stuff. Um so what we're based on the way the current market is um based on the fact that the highway department board today, five fifty four in late January, and we're in mid-September and they still haven't seen us and still not sure when it's going to show up. Um we're concerned that uh twofold. One is we'd like to move forward and purchase a sliding unit now that would fit in the back of our current forestry truck. And then when the new forestry truck came in, we would just remove that sliding unit and put it into the new truck. So we'd, we'd make sure that it's going to fit in both bodies before we bought it. Um the second side of this is to move forward, put an R F P O to purchase a new four-wheel drive truck to be used as a forestry truck, knowing that it would probably, by the time we went through the spec and and got everything, it should probably be January, early February, and we came back to the board and said, hey, it's been out the bid. Here's what we recommend you avoid the bid to. And then assuming that the supply chain isn't going to get better, we don't, we wouldn't expect it. It would be close to the year before we saw the truck. So if in a perfect world, if we got moving now, we probably wouldn't see new forestry truck to early twenty twenty four. So we're we're anticipating uh a full season with our current forestry truck. So that's really what this request is. The funding source for that uh sliding unit um would come from the emergency uh equipment, fire rescue equipment, capital reserve fund, which is what that fund was put together for, for these larger purchases, not to put bumps in the budget. So uh I believe there's around sixty thousand dollars in there right now. I think my documentation told you that it was uh twelve to sixteen, twelve to seventeen thousand dollars. Um I'm going to amend that. I got looking at the numbers and and it's probably going to be somewhere between nine, nine and twelve thousand dollars, that piece of equipment, not the seventeen. So what I'm looking for was approval tonight to put an R F P together, put it up, the the bow of the town's purchasing policy, put it up the bid and uh hopefully come back to you folks um by early uh mid-November or very early December because we we probably still would have a four or five month lead on to get the thing. So if we don't, we don't move fairly quickly, we'd be into brush season by the time it shows up.
Here's where I gain all my fans. Um you know, something that, oh, one of the questions I have. How many times do we use that forestry truck to go out to a fire and actually put it out with the forestry vehicle? Because most photos that I do see online, it's with the engines in the picture.
Probably fifteen times a year.
Fifteen times a year. And these spots aren't accessible by side-by-side? Because we also did just purchase a side-by-side for.
Side by side carries about two hundred gallons of water. That's, I mean, excuse me, forty gallons of water. Um that's not going to put out a big brush fire.
Right. Now, how many times are we out putting big brush fires? Because like when I hear a forestry truck, I'm thinking industry like, okay, you know, we have a skitter on fire that that's down the road and and that's what we really need to do it for because, you know, we're a big land business around here and you know, we have those hard obstacles to get to because I've seen the the forestry truck as a, you know, accessory vehicle to like an ambulance call. So I I'm just trying to justify, okay, going going forward, do we need a forestry truck when, you know, we just purchased a new side-by-side to get into those tight spots to get around? I mean, we're going to have good plowed roads this year. So, you know, having a four-wheel drive, you know?
We absolutely do need the two separate pieces. Uh you can't compare one to the other. And I stand here right now and said that if I had to have one over the other, I'd be telling you about the four if you try to have two distinct, separate needs. But the forest your truck's thirty years old. It was supposed to have been replaced six or seven years ago. As the fire chief and the officers within the department, we looked at the truck and said, you know what? We're 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 going to push the can downward. We're going to kick the can down the road. It's going to, it's going to stack the replacement of these trucks up a little bit more, but we couldn't justify replacing that truck at the time. So we went to the board of selectmen and said, look, we can put a, we can put a new body on the back of it and it's going to cost us about six thousand dollars because there were some rust issues with the previous one. Um the the board approved it and we said that we'd run it till it was thirty years old. Now, now in twenty twenty three, the truck will be thirty years old and we have kicked the can down the road a ways, but we've thankfully, the the town's been good to us. We've worked well with the budget committee and the selectmen to put a fair amount of money away for the replacement of vehicles. So um the money's all there now to replace that vehicle. And the next vehicle after that is scheduled to go in twenty twenty five.
And that that's that's my biggest concern, right? Because how are you going to buy something for a vehicle now? And also get a vehicle two years later from now, but that's going to fit in? That's not just a a small object.
With a little bit of luck, that won't be my problem.
Well, do we know what truck we're getting already? And if it's all picked out, it's two plus for pricing. People are going to, I had to ask the stupid questions.
There's no such thing as a stupid question. Sometimes it's a stupid answer. Um to be perfectly honest with you, um the city of Rochester just bought a a frontline engine. I saw it. They they were coming through and they stopped and we took a peek at it.
Look at what we got.
No, no. Um it was, and it's a, it, to me, there wasn't a lot of bells and whistles on it. It was a pretty straight straightforward frontline engine. That cost the city of Rochester around six hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That's in today's dollars. And talking to the salesman, he said to me, he goes, Rick, he goes, I don't know whether, you know, I don't see the money in that truck. But he goes, that's it. And so I sit in here and go, damn, that's a twenty-two model. We're going to look in twenty-five to do this. So it's reasonable to believe that the cost is going to be seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I will stand here all day long and say it's ludicrous to spend seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a truck that you're hoping up, you're not going to use. But more importantly is is where does the money come from to purchase that truck? Um you know, obviously, our funding sources are a little bit different than the city of Rochester, but they have a much bigger department as well. I'm not trying to compare that, but when you, but when you sit there and go, we have a plan with the number of vehicles we have that every six years, something has to get replaced. Is when you start looking at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace that truck, that's a lot of money. And, you know, are we going to be, our communities, Barrington included, are we, are we going to be forced to lease purchase these things? And that creates a whole that's not a real easy thing to do. There there's, there's things that we're, you know, communities really shouldn't be leasing because if the voters come in and say, hey, I don't want to pay the lease payment this year on that truck, that truck gets repossessed. You know, and but you're at the will of the voters, that the voters come in and the community across the board did that. They almost lost the vehicle. And a bunch of you got together and says, I don't pay for it anymore. Well, you only got one, one or two payments left. So I'm not an advocate of lease purchases. But are you going to, are you going to be forced to um are you going, are you going to be forced to uh take a loan up for this thing? And and now that force is here to add, you know, then you're going to get sixty-six percent of the voters to approve that. So um you know, what's going to happen in three years? Um maybe we're going to come back here and say the right thing to do is to do a refurb and pull the body off, clean the old truck up because it doesn't have a lot of miles on on the frontline engine and put a new rear body on it. And maybe it costs the town two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to refurb the truck versus seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a new one. Um you know, the the budget committee last year said you got, you didn't put enough money away and we got to put more money away this year for fire trucks because them people can crunch numbers. them people can crunch numbers. They crunch them a whole lot better than I do. But they looked at, chief, your numbers aren't adding up. What you're trying to put in the savings account to make these purchases done, we're going to put more money there. So we are standing there and put more money in. But, but the voters have been very good to me over the years. And supported when I've gone in and said, hey, can we put fifty thousand all the way for a truck? Or can we put sixty away? But I don't disagree with you. When I stand there and say to the voters, we put a hundred and twenty-five thousand all the way for a truck. Maybe they're going to sit there and go, ooh. I'd like to. But
All I'm saying is, you know, we're talking about maybe a two and a half to, or two to three-year period on when we might get a proposed truck that you have in mind for this thing. I mean, it, it's your wheelhouse, you're the professional here. But I, I think that it's going to be hard to get something that fits in truck A, that'll fit in truck B. And, you know, since we've only, you know, maybe about fifteen times a year, you know, could the side-by-side handle that for one more year? Till we have to go off for purchase? That's also another
Then there, there are two different issues. The side-by-side is primarily designed to carry people remotely, further out into the woods, into areas where that truck's not going to go. The vast majority of these brush fires that that truck goes to typically end up being in somebody's backyard. And they burned three or four acres. And we're following that four-wheel drive truck with a, with a tank truck. And the tank truck is supplying the water for that fire. And pushing the water out to that truck.
When did three or four acres burn?
What's that?
When did we have that fire?
We knew we have a three to four acre. We, we had, we didn't have one this summer. We had, we had a pretty dry spring this year. We had, well, we had four days in a row. Around fourth of July, we went up four days in a row from brush fires that were tremendously sort of attributed to fireworks.
All right. I just had to ask that, that hard question, so.
I, I, it's, to me, it's not a hard question. You know, the thing is, is I think we've done a good job with current forestry truck in thirty years. The other downside is that truck isn't the standard. I have people that work for me right now that cannot drive a stand.
So there's an intended action on the motion, on the topic. We need a motion and the vote is off the consent agenda.
Correct. And this proposal is to do the proposal, not decision for the purchase of the item.
Correct. So, so to be clear. What, what, what I'm looking for is, you know, authorize me to put a proposal together to purchase a sliding unit to replace the tank that's in horrible shape and the pump. That's on the current forestry truck. So irrespective of whether the town buys a forestry truck or not. I'm either, by next spring, I'm either going to buy a pump and I'm going to buy a tank and put in that truck. And it's going to be more money than the nine to twelve thousand dollars for sliding unit in the current forestry truck.
Well, in addition to this, I would like to see some, some general maintenance on the pumps. Because, you know, you've mentioned twenty years after use and abuse out of the water. You know, maybe we could have the scheduled maintenance on it. So if parts are getting damaged due to high iron or whatnot, or rust, or, you know, the rock or sand getting in there, you know, maybe we can get something before you.
Well, when you got an aluminum pump housing and it, and it rots from the inside because of the water we use. Now, what do you want me to do?
Well, is there an option out there to have that inside coated where it's not aluminum? I mean, I'm not a pump professional, but, you know, those would just be a few. Is there stainless steel option? Or is there, you know, something where it's not aluminum? You know, since it's going on something fixed? Those are avenues that I'd research because I look at it and go, okay, what's the problem? If it's the aluminum housing rotting from the inside, if there's nothing we can do, nothing we can do.
If you ran that pump for twenty-five years and it wasn't because of neglect on our part. You got your money's worth out of that thing.
We sure did. But, but look at the truck too, you know what I mean? We, we do general maintenance of that and we've kept it for that long. So, I mean, it's just, it's something to think about.
You put bottled water in.
There you go. You can fit a pack of those in the side-by-side.
You can fill some bottled water. That should be too expensive.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion in the consent agenda. Item H, we, fire department's fire truck sliding unit. We give fire chief permission to go up for a RFP. On RFP, what is it? What are we here?
In RFP.
RFP.
Second.
Although in favor, well, maybe I'll do it down the line. Was Cathy all?
Yeah, I'll vote favorably to get more information and find out what he can.
Gibson, aye. Scotia, aye.
Aye.
Can we do the same thing on the forestry truck? Well, my intent was
Yes, so I mean, part of the
And I'm okay with it separately, but my intent was to get permission for both.
So to buy nine thousand dollar sliding unit, the chief doesn't need to come to board. He needs to get through quotes and buy it. But the reason to have the discussion, the reason to present the information was to the board, was to present the idea of instead of replacing the pump and, and tank that's on the existing forestry truck. To go with the approach of buying a unit now that would be functional in the new forestry truck. To be able to start the process. And that's why you have the information about the schedule of replacement.
I turned around, made the motion for consent agenda, item eight.
That was your intent?
Tip was for the whole thing, right out, right out of the gate, and it was approved.
And that was the intention of folks voting us? Okay.
What was, item H was, was, was the item that was held up.
Better safe than sorry. Okay, good. Yep.
Thank you.
Police Department Computer Project Extended Juris.
Question I add on that is obviously we're talking about expanding, maybe a new building, whatnot. Are these computers?
Got nothing to do with it. This is entirely the laptop project that we came to the board, got the warrant. We get the warrant for ninety thousand dollars entered in. This is entirely that project. Nothing to do with the hardware, firmware, whatever, technical mumbo jumbo we're talking about for the building. This is entirely for the laptop project. The, going right down through like the pervasive licenses. That is nothing more than us being able to operate through Strapper County. But we need a license for every unit we have. Currently, we have five licenses. We're going to need twelve. The printers, scanners, copiers, that is building related. But it's also tied in because right now we're walking from the booking room, leaving a prisoner, going to the front, getting stuff off. So if we're doing this project, we make them compatible with the laptops. So this is entirely laptop project, not hard PD project, if that makes sense.
All right, even.
Can we have a motion then?
Thank you.
Have a motion to appropriate ten thousand dollars?
I'll make a motion to appropriate ten thousand dollars for Police Department Computer Project expenditures. As listed under item K of consent agenda.
Second.
Second, Mr. Gibson. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Good. Electricity generation contract.
That used greatly?
Yeah, it was. I can't split it still.
It's five in the TA report.
But I only had one question that I just liked it.
There's a lot I don't like about it.
Yeah.
Diet electricity rates.
Yeah.
One piece of information that I committed was we pay twenty-two cents right now with default ever source rate.
Making the best of that age.
Yeah. I just questioned the rates that we're paying for. Going in for the fourteen months, that's the part that I was questioning and so. But I'm just looking for explanation as to why we're at where we're at.
Yeah, so if you had a crystal ball, break it out, dust it off and, and help us a little bit. Historically, entering a fixed rate contract has been beneficial to the town. I included the information before. We locked in a three-year generation rate of about eight cents kilowatt hour, which was fantastic. And, and we, we saved a lot of money doing it that way. The tough part is that expired at the beginning of this year. And the rates we were being offered in contracts were something because there was so much uncertainty. There's still a lot of uncertainty. But we've been paying the default rate. Ever source sets a default rate every six months. Right now, we're in the default rate they've set. I read exactly, but it's twenty-two cents kilowatt hour generation. And so our energy consultant, Doug Langdon of Access Energy, has continued to monitor the market. We're getting to the point where historically rates will continue, contract rates will continue to rise through winter months. Because usually there's high demand, low supply for generation, especially in our region. And so now is kind of a sweet spot to start a contract if we're going to. And so, again, these aren't the exact rates that we'll have. If the select word says go, it'll be the rates that are available tomorrow, pending a dramatic change. But we're off for seventeen cents kilowatt hour right now. Spent a lot of time with Mr. Langdon talking about term length. And the, the, both of us shared the opinion that there's not a lot of benefit to the town to locking in a longer term right now while there's still so much uncertainty. Now, in fourteen months, could be coming back to you and saying, yeah, that seventeen cents looks really good. It would have been nice to have that for three years. But I think that's more risk than the town should be willing to take in the grand scheme of things. The last caveat is our, our electricity, we're a low, relatively low electricity user. We budget about forty-four thousand dollars a year in electricity across all of our utilization. And we do expect our demand to decrease a little bit. This building is more energy efficient than the one we are renting. And we're not getting electricity at the storage unit, so.
And I appreciate that. So the question is to how much do we look to save for this, for this building? Because we put that forward from the building committee, right, to the rest here.
All right. So Eversource is really the only viable option candidate to choose from, is this?
No, so this would be a third-party electricity generation contract. So we'll still pay Eversource for the distribution, for the delivery. It's about fifty-fifty, but that's, that's, Jim will tell you that's rough numbers. But the electricity generation, we have an opportunity to source a third party. Resident, residential customers do also. So it's, it's an industry and the, they shop the market, they look at our utilization, they look at when our demand is. So, you know, these electricity generation companies, they want to balance their demand throughout the day. So, you know, we're not really heavy night users of electricity because a lot of our buildings are vacant at night, things like that. So, and then they offer us a rate for generation. So this would be to have generation not reduction.
You do know that you
Maybe not. I talked to Mr. Langdon about that and I'm glad you brought it up. Because most of the municipal solar projects aren't tied into the load on any municipal facilities. They're, the, the, we're not receiving any of the recs. It's not tied into the load for any of our facilities. And so it's, it's strictly a financial arrangement. He said, you know, the power purchase agreement is kind of a misnomer, should really be like a, a rec contract. Because we're, the people are buying and selling their renewable energy credits that are generated on our property. But we're not, our name isn't tied to that, we're not tied at all, we're not using the electrons that are generated from that. We're getting a credit of those on the, on, on the other side. And you could probably describe it in more specific terms. But what he was saying is most municipal solar projects aren't tied into the load side, even if they're building mounted with a PPA.
Right, but that's, that's Yeah, if you want PPA, all right, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but I did talk to you about that. And that's one of the reasons that we also agreed that, given the fact that things might be changing, a fourteen-month contract would be a good idea.
Do towns ever go in together with other towns to collectively kind of bargain, whether it be waste disposal electric or anything?
So our best opportunity to negotiate would be with the school. So to take the kilowatt hour utilization of the town and the school and say, go up to the market and say, we want to buy or sell all this together. The, and Mr. Langdon actually does energy consulting for the school separately and negotiates contracts and all the rest. The trouble is, the school has been interested in that for this specific collaboration opportunity. Because we would cause them to have a higher rate. So even though the, even though all the taxpayers would likely save money overall. Based on a combined, you know, purchasing power of the town and the school. It would cause, it would save us more money than it would save the school. Because they are a bigger buyer, they have more, a more attractive electricity utilization schedule, you know, whatever. So that would be the better way to go about it, or, or the first step. And then as far as looking outside of municipal lines, the state does authorize municipalities to enter into municipal agreements for purposes like that. But I'm not familiar with anybody buying electricity together.
It's awful nice of the school. Seems, seems like we should really be pushing the school to kind of work with us. I mean, we help them with heating, right? Heating fuel costs?
Well, vehicle fuel. We don't help them with heating fuel costs. But they, yeah, we get that. It, it gets worse because I wasn't gonna, I didn't intend to talk about it because I don't have a solution yet. Present the problem as a solution. But I heard from the superintendent late last week that the, their facility manager services that they've been providing to us for a long time. They're not in the capacity to provide anymore. So we're essentially without any facility leadership and facility staff to do everything and everything, top to bottom. And so that was a huge surprise. I mean, I know they're experiencing challenges in the custodian facility side, but that's something that the town has relied on for a long time and is a big hole. And obviously, you know, I've been advocating for years to develop a robust intermunicipal agreement between the town and the school to codify the collaboration we have. Because
What's their budget? Seventeen million?
Twenty-five million, which, so from my perspective, and, you know, it's not about, it's not about where the dollars and cents are appropriated, whether it's the school budget, the town budget. But if there are things that we can do to save us all money, like the fuel, for example. If the school department was going to have their own fuel shed, that would cost taxpayers more to make, to have and maintain two fuel sheds. If the school was going to buy their fuel from the apple green or the earth pen, that would cost the town more money. So the fact that the town appropriates all the money for fuel, and we're over budget this year because the fuel prices have gone through the roof. It, it doesn't bother me personally that we're appropriating all those funds on the, on the town side. Because overall, it's saving the taxpayers money. And that is, I think, what should be the collective more important, the spirit. Yeah, and so the, the, and that's why I've always advocated against trying to, to count all the pennies and say, how much fuel are they using? What's the value of that? Can we make sure that we're getting the same value on the other side? And truth be told, if the schools stop providing any of the subsidies that they do, like, for example, the rec programs, don't pay to utilize the space. And that's, you know, a pretty big benefit that the, the town receives from the school. Even if the, the town was provided, everything that we provide down, the school didn't provide anything. But still advocate that it's not worth the added expense and time and effort in divvying all that up. Because it's still more efficient if we're buying all the fuel and storing all the fuel. And when we need to go to voters to ask for their new fuel storage shed or whatever it may be, it's the same taxpayers as if the school was asking for something similar. So it's, I think, yes, I, and Danon, to his credit, has tried very hard to make inroads and make progress in that area. But I think the, the school, is that the opinion that they're two very separate and distinct governmental units? And, you know, we do, we do different things and, and we should maintain the separation. So topic for a bigger conversation, but
Yeah, because everybody has a kid that builds a school, right?
Yep.
Okay, meanwhile, let's talk about the generation contract. We need a vote.
Like to make a motion to authorize the entry of fourteen-month electrical generation contract, brokes advice. Access Energy F D's prevailing rates on September thirteenth, twenty twenty-six.
Second. Cathy all? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Update NHMA legal inquiries list? Update NHMA legal inquiries list.
Yes, the reason why I left that forward is that if only for one correction, library director Melissa Hewitt, she's no longer going to be here, so.
Well, she's here now and I'll update it again when she's gone. She's still a director.
Okay, that's that's fine.
Well, we need a motion to vote.
Take a motion to approve the New Hampshire municipal legal inquiries, unless the town, apparently. Yes, present, thank you.
And authorize be the son. Thank you.
That's the second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next.
I think this is you, Jim. On hill tree trimming here.
Yes, I didn't, so not getting the three bids, I understand. You know, it's hard to get three bids out there. But I don't know if that makes it liable to town going, okay, yeah, let's pass this through. It's under, you know, what my intuition was, you know, that even if you just get two bids, it keeps keeps honest parties honest. That was my concern with that. And or if there was any work that I haven't had a chance to go through and swing by, but is there work that we can we can do at the town level to reduce the scope of work that they have?
So great questions. One thing that I realized after the fact wasn't, I didn't elaborate on here, is that Urban Tree was competitively selected by the town at the beginning of the year to do tree work for us for a specific scope. But, you know, we went through, we went through the process. What I'd like to do in the future with the board's permission is essentially select a tree service of record for a year. And instead of advertising specific project, say, hey, look, we're going to decide who's going to be the best for us, whether it's Urban Tree or whoever else, and select them to do this. Because the trouble is, Urban Tree's been doing work for us all summer. We competitively selected them, they've been doing work. The difference with this specific scope is that as an individual scope, it's more than the ten thousand dollars. And Mark and I had a conversation about it and I was kind of on the fence because this is a continuation of services, which is allowable in the purchasing policy. But whenever there's a question, I'd rather err on the side of caution, make sure the select word's comfortable with it. So we we've been using them, we selected them competitively. And so if we, you know, if this was a nine thousand dollar scope, we would continue using them because they were selected competitively, they've done good work for us, they saved us money. And the highway department, to your second question, the highway department does a lot of brush clearing and tree trimming. The the trouble is, we don't have crane, we don't have bucket truck. And so there's limitations to what we can do and do safely, especially in situations where the trees are approaching on power lines. So does that answer your questions? Mark can certainly elaborate.
Yeah. It it does. I was just worried about, you know, the the three separate RFQs. But what you said makes sense, but then, you know, if we do this for the the tree service company, you know, you know, whoever the town uses for a plumber, you know, a surveyor, what have you. I mean, I think if we do one thing, it would probably have to be consistent with the rest.
And to some extent, we do that. We don't do it with every tree, we don't do it with every outside service that we need. But there's a benefit to the town in developing relationships with, Surveyor's a perfect example, that has our records, that has, that's done the deed research. You know, we went through the comprehensive process in the beginning of twenty twenty to select a new engineer of record for that purpose. Because having having consistency in in one engineer that's working on all the projects and can help us prioritize is is a benefit to have that regularity. But they should still be competitively selected, which is why we go through a process and select them competitively on the front end. And for the engineers, we had twelve firms put in for them. We had a lot to choose from, which was great and allowed us to make an informative. So that's why, like I said, I think for twenty twenty-three, we start the process with, you know, and and maybe we expand it beyond just tree service, but like you were saying, some of the other trades that we do just one-off, select subcontractor record for.
Well, I mean, it's just some continuity throughout and, you know, it it's across the board. You know, I mean, it's fair, it's it's evident, it's not, oh, well, we do this one for this one and this one for that one and.
Yep, I think there's a lot of value in that. I'll recommend it to the new facility manager. He's probably sitting at the table.
I have questions, Chairman.
Please.
Can we turn around and authorize three quotes? To expedite the three weeks that was spoken, I was written, I'm sorry, and they haven't done it. We we vote to authorize three quotes to do it, even though it's over the ten thousand dollar mark, we voted on doing that.
You could.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, you can make a motion.
I have, yeah, purposefully do what was presented, but if that's what the board's comfortable with, we're willing to do that.
One other thing, the I I don't know what a road is steak.
Okay.
Yeah, I I know.
Oh, okay. I saw that.
Well, my back has got so many holes in it today from my mistakes, I'm thinking of maybe I'll hand some on. But I I would like to make a motion for the trimming necessary on Pond Hill Road to allow the road agent to get three quotes and then select the lowest quote to it to take care of the tree trimming on Pond Hill Road tree. Is that enough? It was a lot, but anyway.
I think I think it goes against directly what Mark kind of had said, like, hey, you know, even to get people out to quote work is getting tough, so it's just going to put in between a rock and a hard spot.
Yeah, withdraw my motion. Go ahead.
Now, if we do need a motion now.
I would like to see it actually, and I don't know if this is legal deagle or not, but broken down into two separate, so that way we're under the ten thousand and we stay into, you know, our what we have now. Whether or not we do, you know, okay, it's ten thousand to to drop all the trees and then it's five thousand a chip.
Yes, I mean, as a matter of practice, we don't do that. At the select word's direction, we will. But I mean, I won't, I would never let the department head split up the scope of a project to get around the purchase policy. Just for, just because I wouldn't want the board to think that we're doing it to, you know, subvert their authority.
Well, I just don't want somebody coming back on us being like, hey, you know, I'm Joe Blow's tree service, I was available and he never called me, so.
Hey, if that guy comes to, have him call Mark immediately. We'd love to have another guy. Yeah, so, but yes, if if that would make the board feel comfortable, we.
No, because I don't want to set a bad president's honor, just just trying to err on the side of caution.
I understand.
The clause for continuance of work, though, you said would cover this exception to the policy.
Yes, there's, there is a reality where the board isn't even presented with this because there's language in the purchasing policy that that covers it, but I.
Winter's coming, not getting people out for quotes, I mean, then you have trees without, you know, weighing on our lives and stuff, so.
Okay, we need a motion now, so I'm sorry. Okay, I'll make a motion. Make a motion to, I know the wave purchasing policy and allow the road agents to utilize Urban Tree for removal on Pond Hill Road, it's up to fifteen thousand dollars, which is already properly calculated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on. Whiteboard, school boards, he's Caffey.
Well, we have a busy planning board. We have a number of sort of smaller developments, proposals. Today, the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board did a site walk on a foul zone development, which is on Malago Road, the Guptel gravel pit, which is gonna, it'll come back to the planning board, but it's looking at a cul-de-sac of fifteen houses and then with twenty-six acres in conservation. And they're proposing to help the town deal with the drainage issues, or at least some of the drainage issues on Malago Road by having a drainage pond, I think, in that open space. And they'll also have two regular house sites on Malago Road. So that needs to come back to the planning board. There's a multifamily development going on Route Nine, that big eighty unit, they asked for a one-year extension, so we probably aren't going to see anything from them in a while. Another one asked for extension, a three-house lot on Scruton Pond Road. There's a Thibodeau, which is six family houses, two bedrooms, so they're somewhat small with commercial space underneath on Route Nine, and we're doing a site walk in a couple of weeks. We approved a family childcare center on Kate Road, depending on them needing town and state requirements. And Elfmade Properties is adding storage containers. So they bought that lot across from Caleb's. And there was a lot of discussion about whether we want storage units at that prime spot in at the center of Barrington, but the planning board did vote to allow that with certain caveats. They have to build a ten-foot fence to hide the storage units. And there will still be parking there, but but, you know, the park and ride is now across the street.
Conservation Commission met Thursday night. Most of the items were kind of already spoken about earlier. The they approved up to fifty thousand dollars for an engineering study to get the new dam constructed. They believe that they can probably get the cost down with a new engineering study as well than what the numbers have been floating around. They also voted to allot a hundred thousand dollars to sell for the Landry Conservation Project around Mount Misery and Nippon Lake and the Landry property. They also discussed the, some of the planning board proposals that Joyce brought up, Thibodeau and properties. And lastly, they they talked about the capital improvement requests, the town's asking departments for. So they're putting forward some ideas for capital improvement requests.
Rec Department, we have false sports going on, winter sports are, they're prepping for those programs. And we just learned today, we're going to be working with the highway department on getting some fill.
It's good.
I have just need to reach for. The budget, budget meeting now. Tuesday, basically introduction, adjustment of of process for B. Still good, they have some questions. The transfer station, they met their there have been some increases in the haul fees, so we're not making quite as much on metal as we have previously, but still making some. Put money on that. There's ongoing discussion of composting, which is still not resolved.
Composting, where would they put it?
Well, that's the real question of how how to do it. One of the problems, it could be Mr. Fox, who does composting, is Mr. Fox does all the composting, there'd just be a place to put your compost. The other part is educating and trying to get more people to do the home composting. Probably doesn't make sense to have a composting area at the at the transfer station. But it'd be, I think, the effort now is mostly in education. There is a comp. There's some recycling issues too.
Yeah, because long ago, in Connecticut, we had that town, the city ran composting. And boy, all of that money came business. Down made a lot, but they put it into big ones, because they just compost, they had the eight-foot, you know, that went, that drove down all the columns and piles and rolled it over and they go packing. You know, so I think Fox should think.
I think what Aaron said.
He wants more money for him.
Yeah, I think Aaron said Mr. Fox was quite expensive.
Oh, yeah, I thought he was going to allow us to give him the profit while then he'd have the material for free.
Yeah, now there's a cost.
Twenty, twenty to fifty percent of the municipal solid waste by weight is compostable. And so we pay tonnage for dumping municipal solid waste. So there's a direct benefit to us from reducing how much solid waste goes into our MSW that's compostable. There's also the bigger picture benefit of less goes into landfills through more capacity, et cetera. So Mr. Fox was was, the committee determined was the most viable option. But the trouble is, we, that's a contracted service where we essentially have, you know, trash barrels with his bags that people can come and dump their compostables in. And but he still charges to have them there and to haul them. Because it's it's not quite as lucrative when you've got to collect it from a hundred different sites to make it. And so so anyways, his, the business model, the part that makes it a business, is he generates revenue from municipalities, so we're not paying waste management for it, but we're paying Mr. Fox to take it away. But when it was all said and done, the calculations the committee did is it would cost us more to send it to Mr. Fox than to send it to Turnkey. Now, there's a theoretical argument that says, well, it's worth spending more because it makes more capacity. But the transfer station committee wasn't willing to to recommend that. Although, yeah, I mean, there's an opportunity, there's.
An ongoing, yes.
Yeah, there's an opportunity there.
All right, I appreciate the information, thank you.
Okay, and school board, nice school board meetings, funny. Talks about those earlier. Okay. Any other comments? Okay, this is time for second public comment. If anyone here hasn't spoken can make public comments or we have those who are online and raise your hand, comment, those that are on telephones, star six.
Just esteemed staff in the virtual meeting right now.
Whoa.
Made it through, almost ten o'clock here.
They're working.
Better than planning board.
Anything else? Okay, nothing being becoming, we'll end our public comment. I believe we need to enter one public session.
If you make a motion to do another one, for a person.
Open somewhere?
Second.
All those in favor?
Nope, you have individual. Going on public comment.
Public here, Mr. Caffey. I suppose I have a fairly nice natural time. Thank you. Thank you.